Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Sorry we're a little late tonight. If you'll take notice, we have the emergency exits here, all the way in the back at the end of the hall and there to your left as well. You'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Yes. We should have had a moment of silence for our country.
He didn't do that, did he?
Have the members had an opportunity to review the minutes for July 2024 and September 2024?
Yes.
Yes. Can I have a motion? Can we accept them?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Very good. There is enough. I can't go right now. Just that letter there. Great. Okay, thank you. It is James here? James Bates? Hi. Good to see you again, James. Good evening. Roy, mic? All right. So Roy, would you like to take the mic and just give us some direction about what your plan is? Do you know yet?
Uh...
Would you like us to? Okay, that's fine. All right. Say it again?
Uh, the last few, yeah, like four o'clock, so he's not gonna be here.
Okay. All right. James, please, if you'll take the mic.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Bates. I'm with Ecological Analysis. I was hired by the board to review the wetlands on the Boyd subdivision. We had noted what had been done by the applicant's consultant, Mike Nowicki. We went through and looked at it. The chairman was there, the applicant was there. The wetland, as flagged, is there. It is a small pocket wetland, kind of harsh way up the hill, that leads into at least an ephemeral but probably an intermittent stream that then comes down over the mountain or hill slope or whatever you want to call it, across the river and into the Class B stream below. So thereby, it is 95% regulated by, potentially regulated by, the Army Corps of Engineers because it would have to be truly ephemeral and you have to go through a water regime to verify that with the Corps, that it is ephemeral and not intermittent. Private consultants would like to, including myself, say that things are not regulated, but unless you get into a pocket wetland that has no outlet, it's pretty much, that's 100% up to the Corps' decision. So we went and reviewed that. The wetland is small enough under the town regs that it doesn't have a buffer. However, the stream out of it does have the town buffer on it and then it goes down below. At the chairman's request, we also looked and verified whether this area would be regulated by the DEC starting January 1. The new regulations still not have been released yet, but as the last draft went, the whole area will be regulated by DEC, including that small pocket wetland, starting January 1.
Your statement of the small wetland isn't protected by our law?
I meant it didn't have a buffer. I shouldn't have said it didn't have, wasn't protected.
Yeah. Well, the law, my law doesn't, not my law, but the town law doesn't specify small, any wetland, I don't care how small it is, is protected. Protection is a buffer. Now, you quote in your letter here, the only thing I find wrong with it was that 11,000 feet, square feet?
1100.
Excuse you, 1100. That only applies to the feds. It says maybe would be required if the fed. That doesn't have anything to do with the town law. Town laws does not give a small minimum size. All wetlands are protected. And since it's a wetland, and as you know, work very well, there's many kinds of wetlands, they're all protected with a buffer in the town, I just wanted to clarify that.
I read through your code and I understand what you're saying.
Am I right there or am I wrong?
There was a couple places in the code where you started going back and forth that it could be interpreted both ways. So if that was your intent?
That was the intent.
You may wish to clear that up.
And it was 11,000, not 1100?
Oh, I'm sorry, 11,000. Okay, sorry.
Okay.
The, like I said, and I submitted to the board, the wetland is mapped by the Fish and Wildlife Service and those maps are 30-plus years old. So...
Right.
Did you delineate the wetlands on site? Did you flag them?
No, I did not. Mike Nowicki, the applicant's consultant, flagged them and the flags were still there.
So you confirmed the location?
Yes.
And you confirmed the accuracy of it? Was there, did you believe that it expanded beyond it or was less than what the flag showed?
No, it's pretty spot-on. It's literally, what happens is the water comes off the hill, there's an old stone wall there, it hits the stone wall, kind of backs up into this small area and then overflows the stone wall and creates this massive trench that then runs down the hill and hits the, you know, the town, swells and across the town road. I mean, that ditch is kind of deep coming out of there.
Right, right. Okay. Any other questions for the biologists? Right here?
No, I think the only thing I would mention is it is 11,000. It's mentioned in the code. It's in 155-4, the definitions for wetland mention that 11,000 square feet.
Right, yeah. But it says may and then it's only if you go to the feds, not, it has nothing to do with the local law. 11,000 doesn't apply to my local law. You may say it's in there, but it refers to the fed that you may want to look at if you want to. I don't know if we can go there, but 11,000 does not apply. So that wetland would still have a buffer even if it's very small, which apparently it is pretty small, yeah.
But quite active dirty stuff.
Because you have these like vernal pools and stuff, they're very small and they even dry up, but they're classified as a wetland. There's so many different kinds of...
The code section when it talks about vernal pools says there is a 75-foot buffer.
Can be called a wetland, so I purposely didn't put a minimum size on it because it couldn't come to one, couldn't come to the conclusion of what would be the minimum because there are all kinds of sizes.
Yeah, and I guess unfortunately, you know...
Yeah, it left it open.
The definition within the same section of the town code does have a size limit of 11,000. It's not to say that it's not regulated, but I think that the...
What section? I'm sorry.
155-4 defines wetland.
That's why I was saying there's parts of the codes that are kind of ambiguous.
Pardon?
That part of the code makes it kind of ambiguous.
It does, kind of, yeah, yeah. I'm not even sure why I put it in there, but...
Yeah, I'm not an attorney, I let those guys do their stuff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else, sir?
Well, maybe you just want to stay for another minute? Yeah, or 10? And let's see what happens here? So we need some direction, Roy?
My understanding of the runoff creek, I don't know what we're defining that as...
We understand what you mean.
Is that with an application to the Corps of Engineers, we can move that. And moving that, there's no more splash creating a wetland. All right? And I'm under the same opinion reading 155, 14, whatever it is, that there is no buffer on that small, or you have discretion of making a buffer or not on that small. All right? I'm looking to go ahead with this and correct me, anybody, if I'm wrong with my thoughts about how this wetland and Corps engineer moving to the dry stream or whatever it is, runoff, if I'm thinking of it the way it's supposed to be, you know, the way you guys planned it in your code. I mean, is there a buffer on this? Is it your discretion? I believe if we're allowed to move the stream, all right, then there is no more wetland.
So I guess, you know, the town defines wetlands and the town defines watercourses.
Right.
So that's a water course, for sure. It's in our national or natural resource inventory mapping. It's shown as an intermittent stream on our mapping.
Right, so with the Corps of Engineers approval, we can move that?
Well, that's one agency. You still have to get the approval of this board to move it as well. So it wouldn't just be a default, the Army Corps said, yeah, go ahead, change it.
I'm in front of you guys for that reason. Whatever I have to, you know, go outside of is something other.
Allow me to weigh in a little bit because I was there, all right, with Mike and with James. And either one of you correct me if I'm wrong, all right, but it was determined that that wetlands was active during storms, mostly, right, and pretty aggressively. Mike, you stood in the scowl, right, that ravine that it cut through the soil. How deep would you say it was?
Five feet.
Five feet deep, right?
Yeah, that's what it's called, means.
Now, let me ask you a question. That old, that ancient rock wall, right, what do you call those? Those rock walls that delineated property lines?
Property line walls.
The stone wall, the old ones, right?
Stone wall.
Yeah, okay. But didn't it undermine that and send all those rocks down as well?
Yes.
It did, right. I thought so.
The water coming through there is draining up a cul-de-sac on the next street behind us.
Right, and then we also have that water course that comes down the side, on the right side.
No, there's nothing on the right side. The right side is where we want to move it to.
Right. Well, I'm talking about the one that is on the plans on the right because there's two, right?
No, that's one. One is where we want to move it to. We want to move that one...
Yeah.
Over to a riprap wide stream bed that won't get washed out.
What am I, I don't mean to be thick, but you have the one that comes off the wetland straight down? And then what is the water course on the right side? Nothing? I'm forgetting?
No, that's projected change.
Oh, projected, okay, thank you.
That's our projected change. We want to grab it up on top, all right, before the rock wall, bring it down around the side, bring it down through, which we have all the approvals for from the county to do it that way.
All right. I don't have your plans here.
But that's projection of what we want to do with the stream. So that eliminates the stream in the middle.
Okay.
All right? That eliminates the splash, the erosion because we're going to build it with a riprap and wide. Instead of being deep, you know, narrow and deep, it'll be wide and substantial to come around there. And we've talked to the county, the county's been out there, you know, and they told us what they want us to do and what they don't want us to do.
Right.
You know, they want to do, we offered them more than they even want. And they said, we'll take care of this, we'll take care of this. Don't touch the pipe, don't touch, you know, don't worry about the swell in front of the front of the road, we'll take care of it. We offered the swell, we offered, do whatever they want.
They gave you a 50-foot buffer, right?
Pretty much, I mean, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head right now. That was last year.
So right now, you've said that you want to subdivide and you want to put two houses and that's your direction, so we need plans...
Right.
That meet all of Dan's comments, not only 155-52, but also 155-53.
Okay.
So that's the steep slopes.
I thought we had that addressed already on the plans, the hammerhead on the top for the fire truck and everything.
No, it's building and disturbing steep slopes. It's a whole regulation.
The driveway is the only disturbance of the steep slope. The houses aren't flat land, they're going to be there already.
I'll let you weigh in now.
Yeah, I mean, your engineer put the slope ranges that are on there.
Yeah, they're behind the houses.
And now they got to follow through. There's, you got to read the code. There's in-depth documentation that you have to provide. Onus is on you to prove to them why you should be able to disturb the steep slopes. And there are disturbances to steep slopes here, too. So that's, and that's the same with 155-52. 155-52 has an application process, all listed under subsection H of that code, and then they have to follow subsection I, which is the standards for them to give a permit or deny a permit. And it's very clear that, you know, an application shall be denied unless, you know, and then it goes through a certain few other subsections. So there's a whole series of documents that have to be prepared. You have to show where your development is in comparison to the water course and the wetland.
Right.
And then you got to calculate the disturbances associated with it and you got to try to, you know, this actually says, how have you tried to avoid them? Is there another alternative that can be done where the wetlands and watercourses don't get disturbed? You know, so there's a whole slew of information that you're...
Quiet!
There's a whole slew of information that has to be provided and supported. So your team needs to put that together. That's what has been lacking this whole time.
I'm unaware if they even looked at, Gillespie even looked at an alternate site for the house because if there is one that makes it beneficial to you, me, everybody, then we can do that. All right, but it's not been brought up to us that, you know, he has seemed to only take pieces of the old subdivision and try to incorporate them into something new instead of drawing a whole set of plans, which I overly paid for.
This is, that's an application. Right, you know, just to give you an idea.
Not my first rodeo, my first gasko, but not my first rodeo.
No, and I'm not being funny. I'm really not. I feel bad. I don't take any joy in this whatsoever for what you've gone through with this application, just so you know that. So we've established that you want to move forward with your original application, all right? And beyond that, I'd like to just explain to the board what I saw when I was there, just to confirm what James stated. That runoff, that stream, that intermittent stream that comes off the wetlands, I did not see any biomass there whatsoever, any biological activity. There weren't, there wasn't any standing water or pools within the stream. All it was was scowl. It was just erosion from stormwater that ripped away the soil. I think if they don't do the brickbrack work or conduits or whatever they're going to do, it's going to affect the road. And it is a hazard because the volume of water that comes out of that, I could see it breaching the gully and hitting the top of the road and if it freezes, it would be an ice game.
If it ever got debris inside that pipe, you know, you guys and everybody's in for a ordeal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can't speak as to why that little area, which is probably two-thirds of the size of this room, wouldn't you say, James?
Maybe.
Maybe, right? And it's a wetland, it has all the vegetation there. It's interesting, but it rages during the storms and it remains wet, right?
But the wetland is from the splash.
Well, that, the old stone wall kind of makes the water turn and it's the flat spot. So it collects enough water and it holds long enough, but you're correct, there's not, there's not a lot of wetland soils there. This is, if you went through three or four drought seasons like you have this year, I don't know if there would be wetland vegetation because there is beginning to be so much gravel being deposited there.
Okay, yeah.
And once we move the stream, all right, your water course, that water course, not yours, the water course over, there would be no splash, so that's your dry summer automatically.
Okay, so assuming that the stream can be redirected, right, the intermittent stream, is it your intention to build on the wetlands?
No, but that would be, I would be close to them.
Okay.
And if they are, would be like the corner of the driveway, garage, from my knowledge of looking at the plans last, it's been a while. I believe you had mentioned that you would, your suggestion would be to put a pipe under the driveway, all right, or to where we move the stream to. To put it where we move the stream to is almost an uphill battle. So you would pipe it under the driveway and then run it down the riprap on the side of the driveway, you know, because the driveway has to have drainage on the sides, down to the drain at the bottom of the hill.
Okay. And then that would then not affect, obviously, the septic fields that were...
No, no, septic fields are...
Yeah, because what I'm remembering is that I read it in the file somewhere, that the intention was to fill in the wetlands. If you overlay the plans where the houses were and the driveways and the septic fields on top of that wetland delineation, the house was actually right on top of the wetlands and that, so...
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
The wetlands, both, I mean, both houses, both lots, the septics are in the front yard. They're, you know, come up the crest off the road and that flat spot there, that's why with the zoning and the setbacks of 100 feet, we were able to put septics in there because you're going to have grass and trees around the outside and around the edge of the road. So it's still standing green area because the houses are set back. And this is just, it's kind of at the corner of the house and driveway, you know, where this wetland is kind of going to lay out. So if we had a setback of 75 feet from this wetland, which probably won't be a wetland by the time the house goes up there, it would be, you know, a very big inconvenience. And it's not even inconvenient, it'd be very, you know, it'd be very tough to do.
So my suggestion, I'll let the board weigh in, you know, after, is for you to submit a complete set of plans addressing both 155, 52, and 53. The trees, they've all died in that area as you've been saying right along.
Listen, I want him out there, whether I got this or not, just to prove that I didn't stand here in front of you for the last two years telling you something that wasn't true.
No.
And it was worth it to me to pay him for my credibility in front of this board.
Understood, yep. And just so the board knows, all right, right there on 216, all right, the White House and all of those other renovated homes on the right and the left, they did.
We did. We did three out of the six houses in your town.
Yeah, they came out quite nice. So let's just start fresh, all right? Set of plans that show everything that's required as per Dan's comment letter and then when you're ready to, we'll adjourn the meeting, you know, right along until you get those set.
My biggest problem here is not with you guys, it's the point, it's with Gillespie.
Understood.
All right? And I'm going to address that one way or another.
Okay, yep. I get it.
I just, all I wanted to hear was that the conversation is open and it's not negative on one side or the other. It's a common, you know, through conversation here.
Let me see what the board has to say, if there's any other comments.
No, I have no problem with, you know, you've rectified, you know, situation. We know what, it's clear.
Because we still have nothing to look at.
Right.
Right, I understand that, that's the problem.
Yeah, the house, the septic has to be shown in relation to where that water course went off.
Right, and not as planned since 15 years ago.
Right.
I understand that 100%.
If I can speak.
Please.
Thanks for coming and explaining all this to us and appreciate your patience. I know this has been going on a long time. The, you didn't lie about the wetlands, they were what had been suggested with the flags. That wasn't really our concern, I won't go too deep into it. It was, we were told a lot of different things, not specifically by you, but by your representation that, you know, led us in the wrong direction. So that's why we had to ask you to reconfirm the wetland so we can make a more accurate assessment. That's fine, there's provisions clearly in the Army Corps' law that allows you for moving mitigation if you're able to get that, that's great. There's the DEC law and then there's, as you follow along with our regs, there is a provision that allows for mitigation, but, you know, it's up to our discretion, you have to demonstrate to us that it's unavoidable and it's, that the wetland or wetland buffer is necessary and unavoidable, okay? And so you have to sort, we have to judge it based on that criteria. So I just wanted to point you to that section mitigation plan. And the reason why I'm telling you all this is because it feels to me like an uphill battle all the, between the Army Corps, the DEC, and then your ability to demonstrate to us, not just for the wetlands.
Army Corps, DEC is not a problem. I deal with them all on a regular basis. I'm a licensed operations for septic and wastewater and water treatment. So I've been dealing with these guys for 35 years. DEC, you know, they call us to do them favors. So if you, you're straightforward with them and you show them what you want to do and you tell them, there's not a problem. You know, if you try to do something behind the backs, it's a problem, it arises.
Right, right. I mean, we're having trouble with another applicant getting a favorable response from DEC, but if you're telling me you have better experience...
We have very good experience with them.
With the wetland people?
Yeah.
So, you know, I just wanted to, you know, before you continue to embark on this seemingly very difficult endeavor, you know, there's a lot you have to, a lot has to work.
It also has to come down to the fact that that stream gets moved, there's no more wetland there.
Could you explain that? Because I don't really understand that.
We could call him out another year after the stream's moved.
Say it again?
We could call him out another year after the stream's moved and he would give you a donation, a deletion of that not being a wetland because the only way the water's getting there is by the splash if it hit in that wall, all right, eroding, and that's where the water's coming over there.
Right, but you can't alter the hydrology to...
Well, if we're picking up that stream, if we're picking up that stream and moving it over to the side, there's no more leakage.
No, I understand that.
So there's no more...
I could make that argument for a 12-acre wetland and say, if I remove all the hydrology going to it, I'll just wait a year and then we won't need to, you can't do that. You can't affect, have a negative impact on and cause a wetland to die that way. You know, that's not something...
Well, that's...
When we consider your mitigation plan, you have to say, all right, we have to consider the wetland and the water course.
Right.
And you would, we, and I'm just speaking in the future, we have to say, we have to, we will expect a mitigation plan from you. You're going to mitigate the loss of that wetland, you're going to create a wetland somewhere else on the site.
Now, I just, I want you to hear what he has to say and then I want to comment as well about it. And James, if you could take the mic again for me, please. Yeah. Because this is important, I want you to understand it. So from what I understood during our meeting there, the water from the wetlands came from underneath the ground and then...
What I said when we were there is, right now, I can't tell if it's getting seepage or not from the side of the slope, so I don't know if it's coming up or not. I know that right now that it is coming through that stream because, as you saw, it hits the wall. If the stream is moved, I can't say yes or no whether that wetland will be there or not.
Okay.
Because it is the flat spot on the slope, it may or may not get groundwater, it was very dry when we were there, there isn't any, very little of any soil is there because of the gravel, but I can't say yes if you move the stream, it's going to go away.
Let me just, let me paint a picture here. I'm confused and I just want to get this out.
You just did.
Yeah.
You said it was going to go away.
Well, here.
That's not true, you don't know that. It could be spring-fed, just like you said, possibly just feeding that wetland. That stream is adding to it, no question, but there may be more to that wetland than just... That stream is adding to it, no question, but there may be more to that wetland than just that stream.
I mean, I have a picture here.
Some small springs underneath it, so.
Yeah.
You can't say, once you move that stream, that you're not gonna have that wetland.
Well, here's what's gonna happen.
You can make that statement, but you're not true, that's not true, okay. Okay.
So, all right, I have, I have my pictures here, you know, tell me if I'm, if I'm getting things backwards, all right? But I recall that the stream was, climbed the front hill from the road up to the plateau, which then became the wetlands. So it was, it was, it was the road, which is the dais. If you'll all follow me, just so you know, Cliff, this, this is the road, all right? Then, then there's an elevation of about four to one, a slope that goes up. Then at about the height of that coping there is where it flattens out over the court there, and the water and the wall is, was about, the, the ancient wall there was about twenty yards from the, the wetlands downhill.
No, pretty much right up to it.
Right up to it, okay, yeah, so the wetlands came actually to it. So i- is it that, isn't the water flowing downhill from the wetlands to the wall, to the road?
When, if you looked at it, when we were standing at the wall, on the right side, you can see where the stream was going under the multiflora rose. And then heading up through the hill, I don't know if it goes up to the cul-de-sac or not, we didn't track it that far. Um, but because it went into that upland vegetation there. But where it came down, it had scoured because it was turning along that wall and back flooded some of that. And, and that, because it is dead flat again, but that was the gravel we were seeing in front of the wall.
Okay, so that's, that's a big difference in what my impression was. I, I, when we were there, so you're not sure whether all that water comes from up top where the cul-de-sac is. You're saying, Roy, that it, that it is, it comes down, it, it comes right around the wetlands. That feeds the wetlands, is what you're saying, that, that runoff?
It feeds the stream around, you know, the.
So you're saying that water feeds the, the, the wetlands and then it's.
It's not regulated, it comes out of a pipe on the cul-de-sac on top, just gets shot in the woods. All right, and it makes its way, like you saw how it did, if you are proper. I don't know if it's a ravine to the top, but that's where the water comes.
So, and, and, but you're not sure whether it's a combination of the two?
Well, no, because where it flattens off to the left, I don't know, haven't been there during the flood yet.
Yeah.
It, it flattens out and there was wetland vegetation that went more to the left without a bang, which is what made kind of that circle there. So, you know, there was definitely wetland vegetation there and, and some wetland soils, but, you know, I can't say that the water's still not coming off the side of the slope, you know, and it's acting as a fan or and there's, or there isn't wet, whether springs popping out of that location.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that will have to be judged in the spring of the year.
Hmm.
But, you know, when we were there, you could see the scouring coming out.
Yeah.
And, and, and where it goes, you could see that, yes, that, at least during some of the months, it's getting somewhat back flooded from, from that, those.
The only thing that, that, that dawned on me while you were talking is that why wouldn't the ravine start at the top and, and rip down all the way? Why would it make a turn in front of?
Because it hit that wall, what it was doing is if, if you looked, the wall was kind of dying.
Yes.
And, and that's why I walked over and there was the multiflora rose bushes.
Yeah.
So the multiflora rose bushes, where the water was hitting that wall, that was what was making it make the turn. And then it went to a low point in the wall and was going up.
That's it right there, where it, it makes that turn around.
Because the wall went up into there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, if I can just, I think we need to, I agree with what you suggested. Come back with plans, show us how, um, you can design this in a way that doesn't make it necessary to fill the wetlands, or, or if it's, if it's unavoidable and you have to move it, you need to demonstrate that to us. And I don't think it, it, it benefits us to, it, it, it's more helpful to look at a drawing than to sort of describe by hands what the site looks like. So please just make sure that everything's on the drawing, that the flagged wetlands are on the drawing in, in relation to the proposed development.
There we go.
So we can make our decision.
I will say one thing, if the water continues going through there at the velocity it's coming through, that what's left of that stone wall is gonna let loose and it will ultimately go eat back into that wetland. I mean, it is, after that stone wall, it's six foot rock.
You know, I, I want to put something to bed right now, we can't make decisions based on future. It, it may go away, it may, for all we know, more wetlands may show up when you change the, the hydrology. Our decision has to be based on the existing conditions today, and that was the reason why we had you go out there.
No, I, I just, yeah, I was just trying to give you a picture of what's going on because it, it must, there must be a significant amount of water that goes through there because that stone wall is, is, was sturdy enough, just after there is a six foot ravine, there must be an annual waterfall coming through there.
Yeah.
Now, you know, if, if I can just add one thing, at the end of the day, somebody's gonna put a ton of money into that house. And if they have water issues, we're gonna hear it.
Oh, yeah.
So that's what I want to avoid. I, I don't want somebody to have a negative impact on their finances, they put their nest egg into this and then they have a problem with that house because of water, so. Needs to be, needs to be addressed seriously.
Yeah.
But Dan, if they're drawing up a new set of plans and they're redressing this in the new set of plans, why are we continuing this discussion?
Well, they.
At this, at, at this point, I think we've beat the horse.
Yep.
And I think the thing is that if we need a new, if we're, if we're starting fresh in a new set of plans, then what we need is to have everything together before you come back, before you come back to us so that we're not going through a two-year prolonged, um.
Process.
Huh?
Process.
Well.
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah, right.
Which is, which is what, which is.
I'm, I'm not gonna be funny, Roy.
Where we're at at this.
It's not your fault, okay?
That's true, but we're compelled to tell the applicant if we think that he has, he's at a crossroads right now. He could keep it as one lot.
You told him.
Yep.
You told him.
Okay, so let's be honest.
Yeah, so let's, let's let the engineers work it out.
But it's not simple, it's not as simple as he's gonna come with drawings and then we're gonna say, oh, it's fine. We have to judge it on a bunch of criteria and, and I, it would, I don't want to waste your time and I don't, frankly, I don't want to waste our time. If you think it's good, it's just a two lot subdivision, if this was a twenty lot subdivision, I could see why it would be, in my mind, I could see why it's worthwhile. For a two lot subdivision, are you sure you want to go through all this? And that's, and that's fine, that's your choice, I have no authority over how you proceed. You tell me you have great experience in getting good decisions from D E C and Army Corps and, and then you still have to get us to be okay with this and, and the mitigation plan. So, um, that's fine, if you're willing to.
My feeling is that it's a matter of principle now, isn't it, Roy?
Might be.
I understand. It goes all the way back to the motherland, I get it, you're good, right?
At my age now, it's all about.
Understood.
Okay.
Thanks, Roy.
All right, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, James, yeah. All right. Yeah, we have to, we have to open and close, so, yeah. So. Well, um.
Okay, I wanted to comment on the dead tree.
Okay, I'm gonna open and close, right, we're gonna open for you right now, so if you'll bear with me, okay?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It'll only be about five minutes.
All right, Mr. Crane. No.
In town codes, everywhere from the research I've gathered, that dead trees are usually exempt. Uh, at some, um, I've given the board an article from the National Geographic which says the experts are beginning to reconsider on the, on the, as they investigate the ecology of the ecosystems in which dead trees are a part. Dead, dead trees do not, are not worthless. Uh, dead trees are vital to the ecosystems. When they decompose, the carbon that's been stored, which is protecting us from global warming to a great extent right now, goes into the soil and that's where it's sequestered permanently. If you cut down dead trees, you release carbon into the air, which promotes global warming. If we want to do our part to stop global warming, we would protect the dead trees. I know the codes don't specify that now because the thinking has been evolving as people study nature more as an ecosystem, not is it dead or alive, what's this part, what's this part, in isolation. Um, so, um, the, the, just, uh, I'm, I'm not, it, besides that, the huge amount of wildlife lives in dead trees. I mean, these are home, these are homes to a lot of species of animals, these are not trivial matters to be, to me, they're not trivial matters, they're cutting down, taking away homes from, from all, all the birds and insects and and mammals that live in, that require dead trees. Um, I don't know how many trees they're cutting down yet. Been here two years, I still don't know, as a member of the public, I still don't know, I don't know how many trees are going. I know that your codes are designed to protect, again, protect from disturbances to, to steep slopes. I know there's a lot of steep slopes on this land. Um, yours to protect wetlands, and I appreciate what Cliff has said about trying to protect the wet, the wetlands. The applicant has said, the wetlands will disappear, it's the first time I've heard that. That actually that a, a plan will make the wetlands not only not protected, but they'll disappear. Just disappear, that's magic, you know, make the wetlands disappear and that, and you're supposed to approve of that? Um, finally, nature works out her ways of, 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 of dealing with this. I would not put all my faith in engineering to do, to do a better job than nature has done and, and moving the streams in a way that, that allows the water to get, get down the hill and, uh, get into the ditch and flow. And the water will come after the big snows. Uh, the streams are very dry throughout town right now, this rain of one inch is not gonna do much. Uh, when we get the snows in the winter, and you see the steep slopes and you see the water come pouring down, it's, it's not an ephemeral, it's, it's, it's an intermittent stream as you have uh, video evidence of, that, that's substantial. Uh, nature's worked this out, I, I don't, all these, uh, you know, respect the way she does things, don't think that humans can always redesign, redesign the way, the delicate ways that, uh, that, that she's protecting us.
Thank you, Crane, all right. So with that, we look forward to your design, Roy, yeah, thank you, James. Have a good night, Mike, all right. Motion, motion to adjourn.
Roy, Roy?
My bad.
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta give him a date.
Yeah, motion to adjourn to. You, you prepared the next schedule, didn't you, Lee?
When do you think your?
We didn't approve the, uh, the schedule yet.
Representation will have the mapping and supporting documentation.
You're not, okay.
When is it due by for December? Because we got the letter from the Wetland Specialists on the third of first, we were due to submit on the fourth, that's impossible.
Okay, here's, here's.
December second.
We have to push to January or February, even though I think we should just do it now.
Yeah, December second is the submittal for the, the December meeting.
That's gonna be tough, I need to certainly.
Got Thanksgiving and.
Trees on there, I need to put the, where we reroute the stream over, the wetland has to have a open trench that goes to the new location of the stream. There's some things that I don't think is gonna be able to get done, certainly by the first week of December.
So we don't run into a problem, we just have to make sure that, pick a date.
We addressed the steep slopes, I think most of them are in there, but the further, the intention is not to, obviously, remove the wetland, it's to mitigate the stream.
So, so it's more than just showing them, you have to read the code, there's a whole bunch of things you gotta prove.
And the more we push the house back, the steeper the slope gets, so obviously, we have to work some things out.
And that's part of your weighing your alternatives, to tell them how the alternatives affect the plan.
By the first week of February, we should be able to, yeah, I don't want to waste anyone's time. I know December's not gonna happen, Roy's not around on, in January for the month. So, uh, I'd rather not address it without him here, and, uh, so I think February's a better choice, if that's possible.
As long as we don't skip it, because then you'll have to do another mailing, like this, what it is, yeah, okay.
But in, in February, are you gonna have everything together? So that we can look at the.
This engineer, or the beauty engineer?
Correct.
Right.
February three is the deadline. For the.
Twenty?
For the, uh, meeting on the twentieth of February.
So that's two and a half months, right?
Make a motion to adjourn this public hearing until February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Happy holidays, all right, so.
Two, what did you, I didn't hear a little.
Right.
She did that.
Yes. The next item under discussion is Duchess Contracting Corporation.
John, this was listed as a public hearing on the agenda that was.
Sorry, Mr. Crane?
This was listed as a public hearing on the agenda that went out yesterday.
I, I missed your point.
This is Bish Offlane, right?
Uh, you mean this gentleman? Yes, Bish Offlane.
It's listed, it's on the agenda of the head of here.
Under discussion.
On the agenda, it was on the website this morning, it's a public.
We're gonna explain that, yep.
Good evening, Brian Watts here from Dasticos on behalf of the applicant.
But it was announced on the website, because Mr. Crane has a point.
Yeah, nobody addressing.
You will? Okay, we're gonna address that, because there, you'll, you'll, you'll understand in a minute, Mr. Crane, thank you, though. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, we did, we did make a submission, uh, we tried to make it the most comprehensive to date uh, with most of the outstanding sheets corralled to, into one, you know, complete package now that we've had some feedback on some of the other regulatory agencies and the public hearing comments from August. So we, as we strive to move forward with that. I don't know if you want to go into what the public hearing.
Well, procedurally, if, uh, Chairman, if I can address the board.
Yes, of course, Cal.
So what happened, um, back in August, the public hearing, um, on that was adjourned to October, to the October meeting. And, um, the applicant, um, in, on October seventeen of twenty twenty-four, that's, that was our meeting date. The applicant did not timely submit in order to proceed with the scheduled public hearing. And on that date, nobody came from, uh, the applicant's side and no consultant, uh, came ready to proceed with the continuation of the public hearing. So, because no request was made to further adjourn it, it got, kind of got lost in the shuffle there and, um, it, it, it went into no man's land, all right? And we didn't address it, um, at that meeting.
Right.
So, that's why this public hearing didn't appear on the agenda as a continuation. So I, I wanted to make a comment and instruct the, uh, the board, you know, adjourned public hearings results in the delay of the administration of the local zoning law. So the delay may need, may lead to neighboring property owners not having a full and fair opportunity to comment on applications to which they may be interested. And the delay may also impact the decision-making process since the testimony received by board members may not be recalled over time. So, as you know, Beakman has a multi-stage approval process for site plan approval. First, we have that sketch plan, which is the informal non-binding discussion of, of a proposed project. And second, we have the preliminary site plan approval, which is the prerequisite to the application for a final site plan approval. It's recommended, I'm, in light of the fact that there's a gap here in the, uh, public hearing, I'm recommending. I'm recommending that the board move to instruct the applicant to re-notice the public hearing in the paper pursuant to our code for December. All right, I did talk to counsel for the applicant. I told her the methodology of our thinking here, and I was gonna recommend this course of action, because I think it's very important for the public to not, to have that opportunity for further comment. And I, and even though it's kind of irregular, it is necessary to preserve the sanctity of the public hearing process. So, you know, the board at the end of, at the end of this particular application may wish to consider, and I'm gonna recommend that you do that.
Any comments from the board members?
Hey, Craig, in your comments, and I'm not cer, did you say something about SECR?
No.
Okay.
If I might just add that we concur with everything he said, we're prepared to post in, in all procedures that was, were discussed for the December meeting.
Okay.
We don't object to any of that.
Okay. Any other comments?
There's, there's nothing open on your comments, Dan? Response to your comments?
I, I haven't looked at the submittal, it came in after the deadline, so I'll have a chance to look at it for the December meeting.
And there's also, part of the delay was as a result of the submittal delay, and I don't want to speak for you, but it was an analysis that they were waiting for from DOT. Is that correct?
We've, we've been waiting for some various large components, definitely, of this project, including DOT for the entranceway. We need that to be relatively locked in with sidewalk spacings and so on, because the set, if we had to give any, if we had to move the right-of-way, we'd move buildings, because we were, had to maintain setbacks. In addition, sewer and water provided for this site with Duchess County Waste Water Authority, and Dalton Farms behind us, there's, there's some items related to that that we're still working on. We haven't, we've scoped it out with Michael Keating, so there's some, been some verbal correspondences there, so now we have a very clear direction on what Duchess County Waste Water is looking for, for an engineering report to move forward with them. We've gotten some preliminary feedback from the Colliers, the professional traffic consultants from the applicant for DOT. Thus far, DOT is essentially on board with the improvements in the right-of-way, subject to some of their comments. And we submitted the most recent address to those items from Colliers, for your, for your records. One of the things they're looking to comment on at the next, we're expecting from them, include SWIP items. They want to look at that, at the pond that we're creating in the front of the property, because it's against the right-of-way. So we're still waiting on that, but we've submitted the information to DOT, so we can get some feedback from them. That's going to drive some of the SWIP comments that Dan had, some of the sewer water comments, but we've addressed as many of the comments that you already had, to the extent we could, on this most recent submission. We've expanded the plan set significantly, I think, in terms of trying to improve clarity, add some details, a lot of more placeholders, but they are the details that will be on there. They're missing some of the invert elevation, but we're working on that, so the form of the plan set is near...
I just want to stress that the comments I just made, it's not intended to be a total reset of the public hearing.
Understood.
It's intended to be a supplement...
Yes.
To what you have heard so far.
Right.
Okay, and, and include the public, again, with an opportunity to comment.
Now, tonight, are we opening the adjourned hearing? No, okay.
There's no need to do that.
No need to do that?
No, because it wasn't properly counted or, you know, adjourned.
Basically, tonight, we're just getting a status report.
I would, I would propose a resolution in an effort to preserve the sanctity of the public hearing, that a public notification be sent to the affected surrounding property owners, so that we can have a public hearing and can go forward.
Good. Set.
I'll second.
Yes.
I've got a question.
Yes? That would be pursuant to 15559G.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, addresses what you're talking about. My question is, do we want to have a public hearing without all the chips in place?
It's gonna be, it's just a continuation.
I'm thinking of, I understand that, Craig, but I am thinking of DOT's comments and their effect.
Yeah, right, so, if you'll allow him, because that's been addressed, I believe, no?
No, he hasn't gotten a response, or a complete response.
Initially, we've, the professional has went through and made this initial submission to DOT. At, up to that point, we just were kinda speculating a little bit on what they were gonna say, do we need a left turn lane, are we not? What's the scale and scope of the sidewalk, crosswalk, anything they wanted? So we've gotten the first round back from Colliers and the DOT. They looked at it, they're on board with everything, so now we've, we've got the physical dimensions of the roadway locked in, we're putting in a left turn lane. We don't meet the threshold to require it, but any future development alongside of us will, will put us over that hump, and this will just, it's to ensure that we're not creating traffic. So that portion is locked in. Some of their comments are just boilerplate and/or technical details in their traffic study. Colliers has addressed them and resubmitted. Part of their questions, in addition to the traffic study comments, were, we'd like to look at the SWIP because it's proximity to the right-of-way. So they've gotten the preliminary SWIP, which was flushed out with, with real numbers, real areas, real practices, and we're going, expecting DOT to respond with the comments to the revised traffic study, which you now have, and to the SWIP, which you're waiting on, that they've, they've gotten the SWIP that you already have on file. So now they have a chance to comment on that.
I, I hear where you're coming from, because we don't like to get public hearings going without all the information, but I think there's a shot clock thing going on, where we have to get the public hearing going. We already started it, and if we don't re-continue it, is, are we in that danger of that shot clock issue?
The shot clock starts when you...
Let me close.
When you, when you end the public hearing, so it's ongoing. We're okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and without having looked at this most recent submittal, I was very satisfied with the plans for preliminary before. So if they've even enhanced them further, that's to their benefit. They, they showed everything, roadways, grading, drainage, erosion control, lighting, landscaping, it was all in there, it was all included. They had comments from the county, the planning department, they were already addressing as well, so I was very happy with this, with the level of detail on the plans already coming into this, so.
So there's enough detail there that the public can be informed as to what the project truly is?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep.
I'm hopeful that my changes to this plan set have done nothing but enhance that even further for them. It's easier to read, it's more separated, and there's more specific detailing of the concept that we've already discussed, such as the pond, for example, or the, the roadway beds. Lighting, one of the comments was of different heights of the poles, I've made them all 15 feet, so there's no, this one's 20, this one, no, they're all 15, they've been adjusted, so, so those type of things. He, he paid for the landscaping plan, I think it's a very nice landscaping plan.
Very nice.
It's pretty comprehensive, so that's in there. So, so I think now we've, instead of, you know, six sheets here, four sheets here, with a kind of a crowded plan set that has everything kind of in a couple spots, we've submitted 17, 17 sheets, where now you can look at this more clear, hopefully.
Question, are you, you're definitely responding to DOT's comments and some of our comments, are you responding to the public's comments? Because they made quite a few comments at the one public hearing.
Oh, we're trying as best we can, yes. I do have, we submitted a response to those general areas of concerns that they had with that last, with this, with the tardy submission, one being like the drainage, downstream of properties, that's, it's part of the SWIP. The water and sewer, I believe that Duchess County Waste Water Authority was at the August meeting and conveyed directly their thoughts on everything regarding that, hopefully it helped.
Yeah, I wanted to chime in on that. So, yeah, it was determined, if I'm correct, and Craig, you can weigh in on this, that the town nor the board is involved in that. That's a utility and it's between...
Yeah, so the Duchess County Waste Water Authority actually has autonomy over its infrastructure and its ability to extend it from property to property through the easement process, and that is probably, that is what is being contemplated here, is an extension of the water and sewer to the subject property.
Right, yeah. I, I was also thinking about something, I think it was around 2:00 in the morning.
Well, we, um...
I don't know, but...
For example, you told your plans, we do show that, and we do show, we, we're providing like the water mainly end of that, down at the road if it has to go farther on for...
You just read my mind?
Other properties.
I was actually, yeah, that, that's what I was gonna ask.
Bring it to the properties on, on all three sides, where there's potentially either 44 or the town, along the town road that's gonna bisect this property.
So the connection is going to be on 55?
No, it's gonna be behind us in Dalton, we're bringing it down.
Right. And, and what you're saying, though, is that other developments on 55 could pull from that connection?
This could be, we're providing the ability, if there's a future expansion along 50, 55 or wherever it may be, at the end of our road, hopefully the town road...
Right.
There will be a blind flange and a valve and a hydrant, and so they, there it is, we don't have to drag it any further, it's already, the connection is there.
And this is the first time you are revealing this, right? Publicly? This hasn't been discussed before, right?
It's, it's been on the plans, but it has been drafted very effectively.
Very nice, though.
Which is part of why we needed to revamp the plan set, I mean, you know, the concept, our intent remains unchanged, we're just trying to illustrate it in a much clearer way for the board, for technical review for all parties.
You know, but I think the big issue is whether they're gonna have enough capacity to supply your development. That was the big concern for the local residents. And I realize you had someone there...
Yeah. Were you there that day?
Yeah.
You were, yeah.
And they spoke to that issue.
Right.
But that was the big concern. And the other concern was downhill drainage, there's neighbors there who complain that the site currently releases a lot of water from the current retention basin to their backyards, and how that's gonna be fixed? Are you doing the right investigation to, to ascertain what may be the problem and, and how you're, what's the solution to that, and making sure that it doesn't happen into the future?
If I, if I may just, because he had two questions, there are two statements there, if I, so the capacity, as I understood it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, or yourself, Brian, is that right now, you, you've been allocated enough water, right, at 9,500 a day about, right?
We've been, at 10,000 gallons, and in the process of working with the board and as the progress regressed, we've, we've had, we've stepped that back to...
Okay, and, and 10,000 is what's left of the existing system's capacity, if I remember correctly, and then...
I can't, I can't speak to that, and I don't know specifically if that's what they said.
So, it, it has enough capacity mathematically, right, to supply you with water, but the, the, the town's concern, particularly Dalton Farms' concern, was that it was going to affect pressure within the community. And I believe Duchess County Water and Waste then went and dealt with that individually with those residents that, that had that concern. But they're going to be upgrading that 40-year-old system, and that is their ultimate plan, because the current bond on that is...
Has expired.
Has, has, has been paid and is expired, and a new one will be started thereafter.
Correct.
Is that...
That's my understanding. That's the sewer, the sewer is what they're upgrading.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not the water.
They're gonna do whatever they can with the water as, you know, they're... Capacities, they, they're adding regardless... The tank is... Additional capacity that beyond what they already have, that they are, it's in their, that's what they're, they're gonna be doing that anyway they have to, but regardless of what happens here, next door, or anywhere.
Very good, yeah. I didn't realize that, that capacity was an issue, yeah, but we'll keep going now, and...
So the county's not going to give them the okay unless it can meet the requirements?
Right, and, and that's between them and the county.
It's the...
And I really don't want to comment any further about what the county is or isn't gonna do.
It's the Duchess County Waste Water Authority, not, not the county.
Duchess, right.
Right, it's a separate, it's an agi, it's a separate...
It's an agency, understood, yeah.
But it, but it will include the legislature at some point, probably, for expansion of the district.
Yes.
Yes.
For funding.
Very good.
Map plan and report and all that, for district expansion.
Right.
So I'll just, on utilities, my last point again was, it's, would be coming from Dalton down, we're providing stub here, stub here, and stub here, so if anything future either way...
And that'll have the capacity to handle what would be necessary for the town center?
That is part of the, the scoping work we've done at Duchess County Waste Water Authority.
And if somebody joins, then will, will the applicant be reimbursed for some of the expenses or not?
Uh, to be honest, we're not even that far yet on the financials, it's, so far it's just been, what do we need? Like, what, what do we want? What do we, is it six inch pipe, is it eight inch? We need you to do some, you know, pressure studies, we, this is what they require, this is what the, the specific valving they require, so on and so forth.
Now, if you could, Rob's concern, the second part, yeah.
The... Currently, there's an existing exposed water body there, more or less a pond, it was constructed in the past. Ditch runs about in this general vicinity, all the water comes down, picks it up, it kinda flows into here. There's a culvert that runs underneath the existing roadway, and there's an overcharged pipe right here. Right now, the water is up to the discharge pipe, so anything that's gonna come in, it's pushing water out, and it's essentially going straight through. It's a part of this plan.
There's your trouble.
That's, that's a trouble.
That's it.
There's a high water table here, which is what's driving our use of ponds to begin with. I can't get any kind of separation for any kind of infiltration or any items like that on the lower side of this parcel. So the grading... We're looking to provide correct volume storage here, this will be completely redone. We're going to have low-flower surfaces as of acquired, so that instead of having a 24-inch pipe that just lets everything that come in go right out, it's only gonna allow a small, much smaller vine water out at one time, and, and then it'll, has a place to back up in that pond.
Are the surrounding landowners aware of this or not?
Which specific?
The redesign of the retention...
I, I hope.
We showed it at the last meeting.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, they were here. But the, where's it outletting? Where's the outlet?
We're showing it, it, outlets about here currently, we're showing it moved a little bit farther towards the DOT, which is again why DOT is interested in what we're, what we're showing, the numbers, so that it hopefully, pipe doesn't go into their backyard, it doesn't go into the septic...
We want it to go in that DOT swell.
Where the DOT swell, the concrete swells that goes...
Yeah.
All the way down the hill is, so we're kinda trying to not only reduce the volume, reduce the velocities, trying to shift it over.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And, and we'll represent all of this, we'll, we'll represent all of this at the next public hearing.
That's all.
Very good.
So we have, we have a motion on the floor?
They had a motion on the table.
They've seconded, and then we have to...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. That's a motion to adjourn the public hearing to...
Yes.
The December 19th meeting, and direct the applicant to re-ad... direct the applicant to re-advertise in the paper and to send notices to all adjacent properties within 500 feet of the properties.
Very good.
And comply with 155-59G of code for the re-noticing.
Thank you, Brian.
Make sure you do the wildflower meadow in the basin, that was one of our comments.
You would like a lot?
The wildflower mix in the basin. That was one of our comments.
Yep. That shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you, yep, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict on the next matter.
Okay.
So Shane Egan has been appointed by you guys, he's gonna be sitting in my seat.
Okay, very good. I'd like to motion for a short recess.
So move.
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay. Motion to resume?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Matt Towne, on behalf of HVT Homes for Clove Meadow Subdivision. It's a 327 Heinz Road, I was back here in September for the sketch plan, which was approved that night. So this is the initial submittal for the preliminary plat. It's a 13-lot subdivision, there's one existing home, so 12 new homes, a new town road, it's gonna be 1,000 feet long with a cul-de-sac at the end. So, yeah, since the previous submittal, the plans have really just been developed further, SWIP's been prepared, a bunch of Dan's comments have been addressed, but there's still a lot of work to do. So, yeah, I mean, do you wanna take over, Dan, or you wanna go over anything?
Would you like me to review the comment letter at all?
Anything you'd like to do, yeah, that's fine.
All right, so that, all right. And Dan, you just interrupted me, and, 'cause I thought it would be... So, this is on Heinz Road, and... So, right, we've already covered the, it's 23 acres, 23.13 acres, and you have the 12 parcels there. Partially satisfied the natural resource inventory, indicating that there are state wetlands, if you wanna talk about those a little bit.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I mean, that was a big part of the discussion
Yeah.
last time. So I met with the DEC, and a DEC representative did come to the site, and she flagged this lower portion down here as the only DEC-regulated wetland on the site. She indicated that this pond over here, which is currently federally regulated, is not hydraulically connected to this DEC wetland, so therefore, since it's gonna be under 12.4 acres in size, it's not gonna be regulated when the new laws come out.
Right.
That was my understanding.
Did you get a handle on the new laws at all? Anything you could share with us?
Yeah, sure. So basically, my understanding is any wetland now that's over 12.4 acres in size is going to be reviewed by the state DEC up in Albany, and they're gonna make a determination, I'm sure it's gonna take them a few months, but they're gonna make a determination, but basically, if it's, my understanding is if it's over 12.4 acres in size, it's probably gonna be regulated by the DEC at this point in time. If it's under that, it's not, unless it's a vernal pool, and there's, that's its own separate thing.
You said that the wetland up there...
This one.
Right there, that one, is not connected to this one?
It's not hydraulically connected, no. I mean, it's essentially just a big ditch.
The stream runs all the way down between that one.
Right, it's intermittent, I mean, so that was the determination of the biologist that my client hired and went and visited the site, and it was also the determination of the DEC biologist that visited the site, that it wasn't hydraulically connected.
Well, there's a flow there certain times of the year.
I'm sure there is, I mean, that's where the overflow from this pond goes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a ditch.
You've applied the buffer on the mapping?
The buffer, all the buffers for the, in the town's
Right.
resource inventory are shown on this map, and to the greatest extent practical, they're not disturbed, other than where we have a pond proposed over here, and that's just because that's the low point in the site, so there is really no way we could collect stormwater without putting something in the buffer right here.
Okay. Any further comments about the wetlands?
So the pond area, the reason why that's not a DEC-regulated wetland is because it's less than, it's a well-in, but it's less than 12.4 acres, so it's not a DEC wetland.
That's correct.
But it is subject to federal regulations under the Army Corps?
Yeah, but that's not even gonna come into play because you guys have your own regulations, so we have to stay outside of that buffer. If we were to encroach the town's buffer and then also into the core well, then we'd be dealing with the federal regulations, but we're not gonna be doing that.
We're looking at that well-in per town law, and that's been fully delineated under the...
Yes, yeah.
And all buffers have been met accordingly?
Except for this area where we have a pond proposed.
What does that mean, except?
That means we're encroaching on the buffer.
You are encroaching on it.
In this area.
With the pond.
With a stormwater pond, there, I mean, there's nowhere else to put it, really.
So, can we move on to stormwater?
If you'd like, here, yeah, I'm going by the comment letter.
Oh, all right.
Would you like?
No.
No? Okay. So, we're down now to areas with slopes 15% and greater are shown on sheet S2. So those comments have been satisfied. Anything for us to talk about? Any construction going on or disturbance on those? Okay. Soil mapping, then, they are provided on sheet S2 as well. The applicant shall consult with the biologist regarding potential habitat for the Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, and swamp birch, as identified by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. You've stated that this is in progress and will be provided with a future submission.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Then H, trees 12 inches and greater shall be shown. Based on the expanse of the property and the current open condition, there appears to be very few trees on the site. It should be noted that town code requires trees of eight inches or greater to be surveyed, located at part of preliminary plat review, and the planning board should discuss the requirement with the applicant. Currently, the plans show portions of the existing tree line broken in the area of proposed development. If a waiver for individual tree location is sought, it is noted that 130-52 requires that the applicant provide written reasoned elaboration with any waiver request. The applicant's engineer has stated that the applicant wants a waiver for this requirement, a more delineated elaboration of the request should be provided. We note that there are limited trees on the property and that there are trees proposed to be removed. Due to the limited trees currently on the property, any tree removal may be significant. Okay.
That's fair, I mean, we can do a tree survey, there's not that many on the site.
Okay, so you'll do a tree survey?
Yeah, we'll do it, we'll do a survey.
Okay.
So it's 12 inches DBH, or is it eight?
It's gonna be eight by the time you get to preliminary, there's, it starts at 12 and goes to eight. I just suggest to everybody, just go to the eight right away.
All right, okay. All right, so the next item, I comment satisfied. A note stating no archaeological sensitive areas or registered historic buildings on the site, that's provided on S1. So then, the next item, no hedgerows outlining fields is provided on S1. Comment satisfied, comment satisfied. A note stating that there are no rock outcroppings, comment satisfied. Existing stone walls are shown. And then M. So M is Regulation 13012M. The location of existing buildings and structures appear to be provided, however, there is a utility pole shown to be removed and others that appear to remain. Reference proposed lots eight and nine. The aforementioned field map shows that there is an existing easement. If the lines are active and provide utility to adjacent properties, the easement will need to be revised, possibly by relocation. If the lines are no longer active, the easement should be formally extinguished if it has not already been. The applicant's engineer has stated that the utility poles traversing the property will be removed. These lines should be further investigated to verify they do not provide service to any residents corresponding, correspondents from relevant utility companies saying such should be provided to the planning board.
Yep, I'll address that.
You'll address that?
Yeah.
Okay. Heinz Road is labeled as town road on sheet S1, so that has been satisfied, that comment. So 13018 review, per 13018 C, a deed has been provided in the submittal showing proof of ownership for review by the town attorney for attorney review. Any comments?
I reviewed the county, excuse me, the county clerk records, and it's of record, they are the owner of record.
Very good, thank you. Comment satisfied. A note referencing Town of Beekman zoning law is provided on sheet S1. Comment satisfied. The bulk table on sheet S1 states the smallest lot. Another comment that's been satisfied, a portion of lots 12 and 13 totaling 635 square feet will be deeded to the town representing 25 feet from Heinz Road's centerline. The dedication is shown on sheet S1, legal documentation will be part of a conditional final approval. Provide site distance measurements or profiles for the roadway. Heinz Road, posted speed of the roads and requirements shall be adjusted as necessary based on the grades of the existing road. The applicant's engineer has stated that this information will be provided with a Partially satisfied. A road profile has been provided, sheet S6. Profile also includes drainage structures, pipes, rights of way, et cetera. Provide dry weight notes, compliance. Applicant's engineer stated this information will be provided with a future submission? Okay?
So I would just mention, a lot of the remaining comments are kinda technical in nature right now, so...
So nothing else to review?
In the interest of a very long agenda, I would suggest that we kinda get to the crux of some of the other...
Are there any others that he's unaware of?
No, I don't think so. I mean, he's got the letter.
Okay.
Matt's very good at addressing the comments, happy with the progress of the plans and the SWIP. The SWIP that was provided was detailed, and, so we have a few comments on that, and, you know, obviously procedurally, last month, we, the board granted a sketch plan, sketch subdivision plan approval, and one of the items that we suggested is, since this is a type 1 action, so let me explain just really quickly why this is a type 1 action. This is a property that is within an ag district that had current active farming.
Right.
And what that does is it reduces the threshold of a type 1 action to 25%. So if you have a subdivision that's 50 lots or more that are not served by municipal water or sewer, it's a type 1 action. 25% of that is 12 and 1/2 lots, they have 13 lots, so that kicks them above the 25% threshold necessitating this, or classifying this as a type 1 action. So what we have to do is we have to circulate to interested and involved agencies if the board decides that it wants to be the lead agency in the seeker process, which is pretty standard.
Right.
So what we've done is we've prepared a circulation letter to a number of interested and involved agencies. We just wanted a couple of minor revisions to the EAF and the ag data statement, and if you could get those to Aletha relatively quickly, and she'll be able to send out that circulation letter if the board decides to do that tonight. So, and the town attorney brought up a very good point, that we should include the New York State Ag and Markets on the circulation list. So I had the DEC, Health Department, Department of Planning and Development, Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works was only because it's in close proximity to a county road. Sometimes it's better to be safe than sorry, notice more than you need to. Town of Beekman Conservation Advisory Council, Highway Department, and the Fire Advisory Board, so our suggestion would be to, if the board decides it intends to act as lead agency on this type 1 action, then they should consider circulating for lead agency, that's the 30-day period for these agencies to respond, and then that'll keep the process moving.
Okay. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to declare that our planning board is lead agency on this project.
And to include... Do you need us, yeah, do you need us to specify the additional agencies?
To send notice, do you want me to list them?
I think you can just say the letter, the form letter with the addition of Ag and Markets.
Okay.
Because everything's spelled out.
Yeah, do that anyway because it's within Ag and...
Right.
...boundary or something, so they've gotta be notified.
So the motion is to declare lead agency as per the form letter to include Ag and Markets. Peter Paul Track seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just email that stuff to Aletha when you have it.
What's the width of the road?
24.
24.
The proposed road?
Yeah.
You could just add that to it and fold it. Yeah, it's gonna push it past the center, so it'll never listen to that. Did I use my agenda? Yeah, all right, yeah. I meant to ask him. So Dan, you're just gonna go through?
Yeah.
The next item under discussion is Baker Estates. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this was originally, your name?
Yep, first of all, my name's Bill Holvout, I'm the engineer for LMTH Properties Holdings LLC. If you want, I can just do a brief...
Please.
LMTH Properties purchased the Baker Hill subdivision from the Baker Road Associates LLC. They purchased a 26.28 parcel in here, as well as a 2.87 acre parcel, which is up in this end here. This is Baker Road, to the north is the intersection of Clot Hill and Baker, so this is just to the south. So when they purchased the property, they also purchased the application as part of the agreement, so we're here tonight to update the application with the new applicant. In addition to the two parcels, they acquired an eight-acre parcel in the back of the 26-acre parcel, which is over in this area here. This is actually a landlocked parcel, however, there's a 25-foot easement for access to it. So what we're looking to do is include this eight-acre parcel in the application, and what we would be doing is... we would be doing is making this a legal conforming lot to the R90 zoning, which the property lies in. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to clean up the access with this 8-acre parcel by creating a conforming lot.
Is that a lot that's going to be a buildable lot?
Yes, it's a buildable lot. We provide a detailed plan showing all the grading, that all these lots can be built. The property, as you may be aware, slopes from the Baker Road down to the back. So we're proposing all the homes up in the front where the grades are less steep. So with this particular plan, we would have a shared driveway, which would come up to the intersection. The driveway for what this would be Lot 5 and Lot 6 would be the parcel that we're now proposing to include. And then there would be four other lots. The application, when it was left off with the previous owner, was for five lots on the 26-acre parcel. We did, we were able to get the review comments, so what we're proposing now is consistent with the previous plan, and we also took into account the comments from this board when we put together this plan. And one of the comments was to include the 2.87 acre parcel in with this, so that would not be a standalone parcel anymore. That particular property has very steep slopes, so we're proposing to add that to what we're calling Lot 1. It would be an area that would not be disturbed. There would be no reason to develop that in any fashion. So ultimately, we're here tonight with the modified plan, including the three parcels, which we're proposing six lots. And it's consistent with the previous application. The six lots would be served by individual wells and septic systems. And to minimize grading and disturbances, we are proposing a shared driveway for what we're calling Lot 5 and 6.
How steep is that driveway going down to that house in the back?
10%. It conforms with the Beekman maximum grade requirement. And the path that we took to get there was primarily chosen to provide that 10% grade.
Is the limited disturbance, is that all wooded? The whole lot wooded?
The whole lot is wooded.
Is the, are these parcels the same configuration as what we were looking at in sketch?
Yes, very consistent.
Is there any change?
Yeah, I think that they had a couple that might have had some lot widths that were a little bit less. They were considering a conservation subdivision where they might be able to relax some of the regulations in terms of lot width. But then, you know, that was where there was a discussion back, if you remember, of if they went with the conservation subdivision, that we may ask for, you know, conservation easements on the rest of the properties, particularly where it's very, very steep to preserve those lands and preserve the trees on those to help, you know, maintain those slopes. As I mentioned in the past, you know, the town has actually had some issues with Baker Road in this area, so.
Is my memory correct where that sliver over there is going to be open space?
Yeah, that's what he was just saying. He said it's too steep to do anything with. He's going to incorporate it into Lot 1. Don't know if they were going to propose any kind of a conservation easement or anything. Don't know if there's a steward for a conservation easement of such a small size, don't know.
Okay.
And there's no really feasible way it could be used for anything anyway.
Right. It would take some engineering.
So other than the piece down at the bottom, we were looking at a five-lot subdivision before?
Yeah.
That's, is that the existing map from before? Or that's your?
It's an updated survey, and what we did was we added this 8-acre parcel to that.
So we're only getting one lot?
No, there's two lots. There's two lots that are being added. There's 3-acre parcels as well that was being added.
Yes, there's.
Yes, the one on the right.
The original application was for 26, for the 26-acre parcel, and then from what I read, there was discussions with this board about adding the second parcel to this, which we've done.
No, that I understand. How many building lots were we looking at in the last?
Five.
Five. So you're not increasing that?
We're not increasing that.
You're just adding a lot down at the bottom where we, there's a new parcel being added.
And we're, we feel we're making the situation better by creating a conforming lot with the proper access as part of the lot versus utilizing a driveway easement.
So it would be a total of six lots.
Right.
On three, on three parcels right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a, that lot at the bottom, completely wooded, very steep. It was a leftover lot after all the development occurred around it. The previous board should have probably called that open space.
And it was landlocked.
And we left it, that was a mistake to have left it landlocked. And so now it's this lot that's.
Right. The area where we're proposing, the house, is not, it's not as steep as the back.
I realize that, but in order to get to it, you have to take down a forest of trees.
Yeah, and you, do you have, do you have the tree survey on that particular piece?
We do have the tree survey on the plans that we submitted.
Could you put that limited disturbance that you put on the steep slopes map onto the tree map, and then that way they can?
Yes.
Kind of have an understanding of what trees would be removed? I think that would be helpful exhibit for them to see.
Yep.
What I do like, I remember, didn't, didn't the previous owner flip? And the houses were pushed back the way they are now?
Originally, they were proposing more housing and then they cut it out.
Well, originally, it was seven, I think. And then we, then it got reduced down to five, and then you have the additional parcel, so it's six. But I remember the septic being in the back and some of the houses in the front on that one, which I thought was, I like, I like the fact that, you know, they're, yeah.
Septics are still in the back.
Oh, they are, actually, yeah.
There was a couple of driveways on the last plan that I had suggested they flip and start from a lower elevation instead of starting from a higher elevation, which would have helped with a lot of grading issues that they had on the last plan, but. You know, the plan definitely has been advanced to show a lot more detail than was previous, so.
And we do have, you know, we have well and septic separation, so with the, with the property sloping from the road to the back of the lot, we want to keep the wells uphill in front, and that's another reason why we have the septics in the back.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one comment? I did verify with the county clerk that all three lots are now under common ownership. The 3-acre lot, though, that is being added, I was told by the title company that it actually merged with the 26-acre lot. Do you know anything about that, real property?
I don't. I could check with the surveyor, but we had the survey updated, and he showed it as a separate lot. But it's something I can check into for sure.
Yeah, because if there's been a merger of lots, we need to update the map to reflect new tax grid number.
It's just for a swell.
So now it's, it's shown as a separate tax grid.
Right. It's showing us three distinct lots.
Yeah, and our code, when you have lots in common ownership contiguous, you have to consider it in the whole overall plan, and we had mentioned that with the previous applicant. And so this applicant has taken that into consideration and merged it into the project and understanding that that's such a challenging topography on that lot, is not showing any development on that part.
How do we, Mike, I mean, this, we're here for a discussion, right?
He's looking, he's looking for us to grant a sketch subdivision approval.
Well, so, so I think, you know, Craig and I had some conversations about that because the application changed, right? So there's two additional parent parcels, so they've met all the standards, in my opinion, to be able to quickly get back to the point where they generally were before. But because it substantially changed enough, and also brings into account other lands where now if you apply the 250-foot area for the noticing and everything, it just brings it into a better compliance if we just give it a little bit of a quick reset and try to, try to get them there a little bit quickly.
So Dan, we were at one point looking at doing like a conservation easement on the backside of this?
Yes, so because, like, I don't know if you had heard me before, the, some of the lots, as they were configured on the previous plan, had lot widths that didn't meet the requirement. Was it 200 feet?
Yep.
Right? I think that there was a bunch that were like 150, 170. And so they were kind of going at it, and what we did was we, we told them, once they got to a conventional layout that showed five, we said, you would be better served if you tighten it up a bit and go for a conservation subdivision and avoid some of those steep slopes and things like that that we are concerned with. And so they did that, and then when you have a conservation subdivision, normally that includes some conservation easement on some of the other lands.
So is this the conventional layout or?
This is a conventional layout right here.
So then you're going to come back with what you wanted, are you still interested in doing a conservation subdivision?
I did take a look at that, but given the lay of the lands, it really didn't accomplish much as far as tightening things up when you look at separations from septics to wells, separation of the septic to stormwater management. I feel this plan is very similar to what they had, but I was able to create the lots in a manner that are conventional.
All right. So I, my big concern is there's going to be a lot of tree removals and then the disturbance to the steep slopes. So how do you intend on mitigating that?
Yes, we've incorporated, you know, all the road removal measures, you know, to mitigate any impacts that would be resulting from that. And like I said, with this layout, we really tried to keep out of this real steep slope area, so we have very little disturbance to them. There's a portion up in here to make this lot conforming that we had to be grading to meet the 10% requirement on the driveway and provide a conforming lot.
It doesn't sound like a mitigation plan to me. What you're doing is you're trying to minimize the impact, but you're not mitigating a lot. There's a lot of tree removals. So the one thing that made it palatable to me was what prevents when these new residents move in to do more tree removals, because a lot of people tend to want to open up their lot. And you have a very sensitive environment there. You have a stream down at the bottom, you have steep slopes, you have very wooded lots that have, that are habitat.
Understood.
And I'm not trying to remove the development potential, but at the same time, there's a lot of trees being removed.
So you were looking for, are you looking for a conservation easement?
Yeah.
As a possible mitigation measure?
Well, that, at least.
It's something to consider?
It's still not even mitigation, but it's at least protecting the rest of the back.
Right.
Can we utilize a conservation easement that would limit their ability to, you know, remove all the trees, you know?
Those slopes are so steep, Robert, back, that I don't think anybody's going to try to do anything. If you look, I may be wrong, but I think those slopes, slopes down to the stream are so steep that you wouldn't be able to do anything. There'd be no reason to disturb that.
But there's no down.
So I don't, in that, in under that scenario, a conservation easement would hurt them?
Right. Would, does that take it off the tax rules?
It does. It actually helps them with their taxes.
Right.
But I'll give you an example of the part, if you drive, if you've ever been on the, they rail the trail, their neighbors that have done stuff to them, they washed, they modified the hydrology, they did clearing, they changed the hydrology, and it washed out the trail. And that wasn't something that the railway did, that was something that happened as a result of allegedly actions from a neighbor. So.
Alleged.
So Matt, that's not an issue for you?
It's something we can look into for sure.
Okay.
I think that would benefit Rob's point and.
Bill? Oh, where'd I get Matt?
The last guy.
Gosh, he doesn't even look like the last guy.
That layout is all conforming lots, right?
Correct.
No, you don't have to go before the ZBA?
No.
With a conservation easement, would you have to go before the ZBA?
I.
Or conservation subdivision?
No, the planning board has the authority to, to change the bulk regulations of lots if you go to conservation easement, but, or a conservation subdivision. But I think he'd still, with this configuration, still be a conventional subdivision. We could still, just because it's a conventional subdivision doesn't mean you can't have a conservation easement or deed restrictions on the lots.
Even with a conservation subdivision, you have enough acreage with each lot.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
I mean, I think that would be a good thing for the subdivision.
If it's something that we'll definitely take a look at, and I believe it's.
Please don't give away just this token little.
Understood.
15-foot strip at the bottom.
Understood.
For me, for this to be worth it, it needs to be a robust easement area.
Understood.
There's a lot of, and what I'm trying to protect, just so we're clear, are those steeply sloped wooded areas, which is almost the rest of the parcel.
And I think that benefits both sides.
It's 130-45 of the code.
Taxes.
Yeah.
Not having any responsibility for it.
Yeah.
That's a conservation.
Subdivision.
Right. But again, he, he can continue with a conventional, or the board could ask him to do, go to conservation. What he's saying is the lot configurations, unless, unless we can find, you know, some benefit of going to conservation where there's less steep slopes or less large trees are removed or something, he's still proposing right now a conventional subdivision in which he can still have a conservation easement or deed restrictions on it without having to go through the 130-45, so it's kind of a.
I got you.
Yeah.
We're going to want to see some really good erosion control measures, not just your silk fence. You're doing vast areas of disturbance on steep slopes. We need to see erosion control, including blankets and matting. And I don't think a silk fence is going to cut it for a lot of this.
That'll, that'll, won't be a part of our.
Okay.
Yeah, and one of, one of the things in 155-53, you're going to see, there's a lot of standards in there.
Yeah.
You got to, you know, kind of show volumes, types of soils, vegetation, all these things that are really.
Benefits everybody.
There's quite a bit there, so.
I, we're in the process of finalizing the SWIP, and I have all that information in there.
Okay.
Yep.
I think Rob's point benefits everybody. It benefits the conservation and it benefits the landowner who's responsible for property that he really can't use.
Understood.
Yeah, and I don't want to limit their ability to develop the parcel.
Right, right, right.
You know, not against people's rights to develop. I think it's just sensible development that, you know.
Yes, my dear.
Any actions here?
Yeah, there you go.
Want to declare lead agency or grant a sketch?
And Bill Crane will be.
Is he still moving in that direction, Dan?
Yes. Right. Yes, I do.
Maps.
So, yeah, what we, what we suggested was, since, what we had talked about was, just because there is some substantial difference in the parent parcels and everything, regardless of the fact that there's only one extra building lot, it makes sense to go backwards in the process and kind of consider this almost like a new, but being that they've, they've got. much more detail on their plans than, you know, the normal sketch approval process part. So we are, we are suggesting that the board could consider granting sketch subdivision approval and also declaring intent to act as a lead agency for coordinated review of the unlisted action and authorizing the planning secretary to circulate materials to the involved and interested agencies. And I had prepared a draft circulation letter for your consideration on that as well.
We're not inhibited going forward now that with these other conditions we're talking about, we're still contemplate that as a world forward?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's not gonna prevent us?
It's still a fluid plan at that point, yeah.
There's no commitments with the sketch at all.
Nobody owns it there.
Oh, yeah.
No, there's no AAF comments.
So you own that thing, or you own that parcel on a steep side? You do? Yeah, 'cause I was thinking all those things that might have been different landowners, you couldn't put a conservation easement, you had to contact each one of them, that would be a joke, but, yeah, okay.
So I would like to make a motion to grant conditional, it's conditional, site approval.
Sketch.
Sketch, I'm sorry.
Sketch subdivision.
Sketch.
And I know, I, there's a lot more to this.
And the lead agency.
And declare ourselves as lead agency.
Those two separate.
So you probably should do it too, and it's declaring your intent to act as lead agency.
Okay, so I did the first one.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and?
I will make a motion to declare, for the planning board to declare lead agency.
Yep, so the motion is intent to declare lead agency, can I have a second? Peter Poltrak, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have it at the nine o'clock.
Peter.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks very much.
Take care.
Pellegrino Lot Line, realignment.
No.
Do you want that to him?
No.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What in the hell's Cottage Road?
It's off Baker. Up on the right.
Right.
Right, send that down. Give it to the secretary.
Give this to the secretary.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Kerrigan.
Hi, Thomas, how are you?
Bobby.
This is Thomas with the Pellegrino Lot Line realignment?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just gonna give a brief overview of the project, since I was at the last meeting, we hadn't been retained yet. The applicant, Leslie and Anthony Pellegrino, are seeking to a lot line adjustment between the property at Nine Cottage Road, shown on this map as Lot 1, and Lot 2, to transfer 1.488 acres from Lot 1 to Lot, excuse me, from Lot, to the Lot 1. This, this will address some nonconformity, but also increase their lot size and provide a little bit of room between the two lots.
Which is one and two?
One is the lot that is currently developed, yes, and two is the lot that is currently undeveloped. This shown here is conceptual, it's not a, there's nothing actually on Lot 2 at the They retained John H. Decker to prepare their lot line adjustment plan, which was presented to this board back in August. Comments were received from Mr. Kohler's office, at which point we were retained to address comments. The applicant wanted to pursue a waiver of some of the requirements in that comment letter, which are part of the code, since this falls under the subdivision section of code, and they also worked to address some of the other ones. One of the, some of the ones we addressed were delineation of a wetland located on Lot 1 that was listed in the National Wetland Inventory. Lobella, the wetland scientist went to the site, verified its existence, flagged it. It was picked up by Decker and added to this plan. Also added to the plan since the last submission was topography on Lot 2 as requested. Shown partially are some of the steep slopes along the western side, along Cottage Road, just off the embankment, on the planned road by Decker. It appears that the steep slopes extend beyond that, there's more than just 15% in the town code. There's other criteria that will need to be addressed in future submission. The other items that we wanted to get a waiver for were specifically in relation to the getting a biologist to verify if bats are out at the site. We proposed to address that by, as part of the plan, limiting tree cutting to the bat window between November and the end of March. That's been acknowledged in Mr. Kohler's current memo, so it wouldn't be a waiver, it would be a condition of this lot line adjustment.
Can you move the thing up closer to your mouth so we can?
Sorry, is this better?
It should be better, sorry.
No, sorry. The other two items were in relation to grading changes in the driveway. The waiver letter was requesting these items be waived for a couple of reasons. One, there is an approved septic plan by the Health Department that shows the house and driveway in these locations. It was our understanding prior to submitting the letter that this was part of a subdivision approval, which we have learned since that submission that may not be the case, but the applicant is seeking to have that waived partially because that grading in this area would be part of any plot plan that would be prepared, but it has not been, as of this time, confirmed that the location shown would meet the requirements of the code that has been explored. The other item they were looking to waive would be having a tree survey performed, again for small reasons. Section 155-53.1D2 states that tree removal, when saw as part of the building permit, would be reviewed by the building inspector, so they were seeking to have a tree removal and any tree survey be conditioned as part of that approval at that time and not as part of this application. At this time, the applicant is seeking, is seeking the planning board consider the waiver request letter that we submitted as part of the previous mission, with the exception of the bat, the bat biologist due to us limiting tree cutting to, into the window when they're not active.
Yeah, so I guess let's just jump right onto the waivers since Tom's talking about that. I, I suggest that the, they're providing mitigation with the tree clearing restrictions that they're showing on there, so that really doesn't need to be waived. They're acknowledging that there's potential habitat that's identified by the DEC and the common and typical mitigation practice for that is just not clearing the trees during the summertime or spring and fall when the bats are present and foraging and living there, so that we consider as just a mitigation for the potential of that there, so we wouldn't necessarily say that there needs to be a waiver for that. With regard to the waivers for, let's see, the driveway and showing the grading and all that, I, I just can't support that. Regardless, once you get into delineating those slopes for 155-53, I think you're gonna see that you're gonna have moderately steep slopes, extremely steep slopes, right along that whole frontage of Cottage, and all that's gonna do is kick it back to this planning board for when they go to the plot plan. So they're coming to the planning board no matter what. It's a suggestion here to have a plan to show that when you're taking land away from the vacant lot, that you're not taking away the ability to find a better way into the site without disturbing steep slopes. So grading of the driveway, profiles of the driveway, you know, driveways meeting the standards of the town, meeting the standards that the fire department needs to be able to, to say that they can access the site, it's very important, so, you know, if you're, if you're adding to this lot, it wouldn't matter, but you're taking, you're taking away land from this particular lot, so it's now on, the onus is on you as the applicant to, to prove that the lot is viable, so that's, that's my position on that. And trees are of course important for the whole discussion on, on the steep slopes, so regardless of the fact that the Health Department approved a septic location, it doesn't necessarily matter with where the house and the driveway is shown, that's still, that's still a planning board issue at this point. That's the important stuff, I think, 'cause the waivers are something that the applicant wanted to discuss for sure, so.
Okay, all right, so can we, the first waiver is, you're asking us to waive your, the requirement for you to get a wildlife biologist to assess for bats?
Correct, the way we would address that and would be to just limit the tree cutting so, to a point where it wouldn't affect that out, that they wouldn't be present on site during the window of November 1st to the end of March.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. So why, why wouldn't we waive them? That makes sense to me.
The, the typical mitigation and what, what you're gonna find is that they may send a biologist out there and they say, "There's trees, it's potential habitat, don't clear between, you know, November 1st and March 31st," that's what they're gonna say.
And so he's saying he's already gonna do that?
And, and he's already, he's already?
So, so we're saying yes to the waiver then?
He is saying that, yeah.
Well, not necessarily, he's really, he's really addressing it.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned.
So he doesn't need a waiver?
It, the way?
He seems to think he needs a waiver.
No, it's, it's, it's just identifying if the, if the site has potential for endangered species, it doesn't necessarily say, you know, as determined by a biologist.
Okay, so we don't need to address that?
I think they did address it.
It's already addressed.
It's not, it's not a mission, they've addressed it.
We don't have to?
Yeah.
Well, are you comfortable knowing that we think you've addressed it by?
Yes.
By obligating yourself to not cut trees?
Yes, and we're going to put that note on the plan so that it's clearly?
All right, so no need to vote on that waiver.
Okay.
The second waiver was the trees? Where are the waves?
The driveway.
Number, my, my comment letter number 1G and number 4.
The driveway, yeah, so the driveway.
This says, 1G is trees 12 inches and greater shall be shown based on the expanse of the property would be in support of allowing the applicant to only survey those trees in the areas proposed to be disturbed. It should be noted that, so now you're asking for a waiver to not have to show the trees?
Correct.
Okay, and your argument is you made the lot smaller, it may have demonstrated your ability, or that's for a different waiver, but are you, you're saying we would, we would just suggest that he only show the trees in the location of where there's proposed disturbance?
Yes.
And if it doesn't work out there, then, and he has to move the driveway or something?
Then he has to show that?
Right. Then he's gonna do more trees.
Right, right.
All right, so we're not gonna waive, or, I'm not, why do I speak for everyone?
Right, no, yeah.
I don't know that we're gonna approve your waiver, what we can do for you is limit your locating of trees to just the areas of your proposed disturbance?
That would be all right, yes.
Okay. But knowing that if your plan changes and your proposed disturbance changes, we may need you to?
Understood, I think, to Mr. Kohler's point, I think this one and the following one sort of go hand in hand, so we should maybe discuss that one and then we can come back to the trees.
The third waiver was which comment on your comment in your letter, number 4?
Number 4.
Provide driveway notes to show compliance with 155-56, the applicant has requested a waiver. No, because, that was the one where you said, because you're reducing the size of the lot, we now have to demonstrate where you can, where this driveway will work, so.
Yeah, mixed, mixed in with the fact that the, there's steep slopes along that entire section of the frontage to Cottage Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I concur with what you're saying.
The, it would actually be almost a better plan to come off of Dill Hill, because there's no steep slopes on that side, but to, there is kind of an issue in the fact that this particular lot is involved in the road maintenance agreement that pays for Cottage Road. So it's like you're paying for Cottage Road, do you really wanna come off of Dill Hill? And then does Dill Hill have?
Dill Hill's a private road?
They're both, they're both private roads.
One is shorter though, that's what Enzo proposed, right?
I, I think, I think by the time you switch back from Cottage to deal with the slopes that you're dealing with and everything, you might end up being about the same in distance and, and then you're dealing with less fill for sure, because you're gonna, there's gonna be fill in this driveway.
Yeah, and right now he's proposing going off of Cottage and asking for a waiver, so I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I concur with Dan, I think he needs to?
Yeah, deny it.
You wanna make your case, or?
I think we, you know, we put in our letter what we felt was the justification for the waiver, you know, it's understanding there are, you know, the need for knowing that this lot, whether it was built or not, we, the driveway location we have shown on the lot line, line by now, Mr. Decker took that from previous mapping of a proposed driveway location for this lot, so we were simply stating that, we are consistent with that.
Why have you designed the driveway in a certain manner than it is?
As I said, we, Mr. Decker prepared this plan, took the driveway location from older approved drawings, so we were being consistent with that, he was being consistent with that.
So if the driveway is changed, the location of it, the entrance off of Cottage Road, you're gonna have less disturbance.
No, then you're going across the slope and you're, that means you're going downhill. The reason why he's doing the dogleg is so that you're?
You're still?
It's 20 feet lower than Cottage Road.
The house?
The house is 20 feet lower than Cottage.
Oh, we're going down this way.
It's 580 up at Cottage and it's 560 down by the house.
So what's the degree of slope?
Steep, well, it's, you know, it's 102 feet from the face of the house to the property line, so I mean, you know, the average gradient in that area is about 20%. There's areas where it's higher. That's why the delineation of those slope ranges in 155-53 are important, 'cause the board will have to go through the slopes, standards and all those things for this.
What he's saying is he, they didn't, they haven't changed it. The only thing they're changing is the, the lot line, but the, the location of the house and the original lot, driveway alignment hasn't changed, and, and it's on the same grades as it was when we, whoever approved it originally. Is that right?
The Health Department, it's a Health Department approval, they don't review driveways and grades.
No.
We thought, while operating off of a subdivision?
Oh, before they just got Health Department approval?
That's all it was, Health Department approval.
But how did he get a subdivision?
It wasn't, this isn't part of a subdivision, this is, this is a, this is a lot that was created probably long ago. This is a lot that was created probably long ago, probably by deed.
All right. So he's got a good point. We really haven't reviewed it. I tried. I really tried to see your side of it. But Dan makes too compelling of an argument.
Hmm.
All right. So what was the other waiver? Is that it?
Yeah. I believe so, yeah. We were at five. It was five.
That's powerful. Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
That was six, ten, two, three, yep, turn your driveway. Yep, that was it for the waivers.
All right. So what are we doing today? We're looking, this is just a discussion? We did look at this before.
Yeah.
So that's our determination of waivers. What, what else do we need to discuss?
That was it. Am I right, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, the board had, um, the board had granted, um, or deemed the action type two at the last meeting. So there's no seeker lead agency circulation, anything like that associated with this one. So it's really just about.
Because really all they wanted, all they're here for tonight is the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, right.
That's all they're here for.
And the waivers, which we've just addressed.
Which they don't need.
Yep.
Which we're not granting them.
Right.
Which means they have to go back to the drawing board and do some survey and locating and then modify the.
Right, but they, but there's no reason not to grant the lot line adjustment. All you're doing is creating a lot. Forget the house or the proposed part that's there. That's totally different sets, item.
When we, when someone reduces the size of a lot, they do a lot line to reduce the size of their lot, we now have to reassess whether that lot works. It means, does the driveway work? Does the septic work? Can the house be located? Constricting it, will that, you know, before they had more room to get a driveway, now it's got less room. And just for argument's sake, if you reduced it to a postage stamp and said, this lot works, well, if I can't fit a house on it, you know, we still have to make that assessment.
Yes. But what you're doing is you're judging it right now by the old map or, or whatever what was, what was.
We need the rest of the information that we haven't waived. We need the rest of the information that we have not waived. That's not here.
And I'm saying, well, you, to, to adjust the lot line and create the other lot, that, to me, that is just A B.
But as Bob says, we wanna make sure the house works on the reduced size.
Yeah.
The driveway.
That's their problem, not mine.
Well, no, because we're, we're creating a lot.
It's gonna be the waivers problem if it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Well, okay, but as Dan said, you may be able to come up from Dill Road. Okay, versus, versus Cottage.
Right. We don't work on speculation. We need them to demonstrate how it's gonna work.
Right.
So they have to submit the information that we need. They were looking for waivers tonight.
It's like Dan said, if he was adjusting the lot line to make the lot bigger, then we know it already worked at the smaller size. He's just made it a little bigger. There's no reason to believe it will work. But he's actually adjusting it to make smaller.
What's the adjustment?
He's going from here to here. He's basically going from a third, then he's dividing it in half. It's a good idea and I don't think there's any big problems here. And I'm sure you're gonna be able to demonstrate that it works. We just need to substantiate that.
Understood, yes.
Can you go with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're saying he wants to go from here?
From there.
From here to here. The, the last applicant just showed us a parcel that some board approved that was landlocked, didn't have any access to a road, was completely, was steep and completely wooden. And today, we probably would not have allowed that to, to go forward as a buildable line.
All right, all right, Peter. We're gonna move on to the next application, if you don't mind. All right?
You got your marching orders?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Samantha Estate Subdivision?
Yes.
I guess what I'm trying to say is I think we were just sort of thinking that.
Good evening, how are you? I'm Amy Patain. I'm the project planner with LRC Group. Um, we are here again representing the applicant LMTH Property Holdings for the five lot subdivision on the six point three acre parcel, um, the corner of Beekman Road and Greenhaven Road.
Yes.
Um, we were last in front of the board in September. Since then, we have submitted to the Department of Health and we have also coordinated with and submitted to the DPW. Um, we also received Dan's latest comments. Um, most of them seemed minor. The ones that stood out were regarding the 100 year elevation of the infiltration basin on lot three and four, as well as the drainage area in lot two. So we're here tonight. I have our project engineer Brittany to speak to the board regarding, um, addressing those comments.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Brittany Shaakely. I'm the project engineer. Um, so going off of Dan's comments, um, one of his comments was regarding, uh, the drainage area that was going here. We, there wasn't, there's more area than what we were counting for. So all that is gonna really do is just increase the pipe that's going underneath of lot two's driveway. Um, and then his other comment was regarding adjusting this easement to encompass the 100 year elevation. Um, so since we received his comments a couple days ago, I've gone and revised the plan. Um, not shown here. I can show you in a second, but we've shifted the building up slightly and the septic up to get it out of the depression. There's an existing depression that's here. And I've enlarged the infiltration basin to also account for, um, a lower infiltration rate, even though we have a measured infiltration rate of like 25 inches per hour. We've decreased it by half for a factor of safety. So we've increased it slightly. Um, and we've also adjusted the easement area to encompass the 100 year event. Um, we've also been working with the DPW and not shown on here, but they were concerned about the site distance of the driveway for lot five. So we've adjusted lot five's driveway location to be on the far side. So that gives you 555 feet each So you can see that down in this lower corner here. Um, we've just adjusted it to the corner of the property line and you're gonna get 550 feet, which is based on the 50 mile per hour, uh, speed limit that's on Beekman. Um, you can pull that one back up. So what we've done with working with the DPW, um, we've revised since our last, um, submission to you, we've revised the, uh, swale and infiltration basins around lot two and lot one. And we've also then increased the pipe size that's existing eight inch to an 18 inch. And we've gotten conceptual approval from the DPW that they are okay with that. We've sized it for a 50 year event so that meets their standards. Um, with that though, it increases the runoff to neighboring properties, but we've designed the infiltration basins to treat all of our onsite improvements. So we're not increasing our site offsite, if that makes sense.
They're not increasing the flow to the.
Correct. Well, we're increasing the flow because we're adding a 18 inch pipe, but from our development.
But you're not increasing the addition to that.
Correct, yes. And that goes for the same thing down here in the bottom. We're also not increasing the, um, any of the events offsite, we're decreasing on. That's kind of what we've been working through. Um, I know there's a couple comments that Dan has that are outstanding that we're gonna work through to address. Um, but we don't believe that it should change any lot configurations or anything like that.
How do you, on the seeker, there's a question regarding stormwater flow and increase in down. Is there, is there a question regarding, is there an increase in downstream flooding?
It's more of an impact to, you know, the waters. And so.
The boy's subdivision.
The Department of Public Works, I was, I was on a phone call with them and I showed them some of the pictures that I had, uh, of when the road was flooded over. So Greenhaven Road is a safety hazard and they identified that and said it, it's more.
I know that issue. I do.
So.
And I.
The only way to fix that is to, to make the pipe bigger, which is so.
I get that. That from, from their point of view, they wanna make sure the pipe gets fixed so the road doesn't flood.
Right.
And by the way, I don't want the road to flood either. That's not something I want. My question is downstream flooding.
Yeah.
Is there an impact to it? Am I being, am I asked to sign a, a statement that's saying there's an impact of downstream flooding that the town could be liable if someone downstream ends up soaks?
Now, yeah, so I, I understand that they've given you the right to continue the water. What is happening over there to reduce the, the, the flow of the Fishkill Creek?
So there's currently an existing easement for that pipe to discharge and the development that's on, uh, this side of Greenhaven, it has a swell in the back of all the houses that will make its way down to the Fishkill.
Hmm, wow.
Okay.
And that's an existing easement?
Yes, correct. Yep. And we're not changing it.
It goes through, I think, four undeveloped lots right now and that developer is aware of this as well.
Part of Charbel.
Yep, yep. Charbel, people know about it. Mark Caneli knows about it. And, uh, and then it gets into a water course. So it's, the, the impact to, you know, this gets to the Fishkill Creek. There's a 100 year flood plain on the backside of the Charbel. So, you know, so it's really, this is, this is a drop of water in the bucket.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, you know, that's the, I think that's the technical term.
It's a good visual.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it's solving a safety and, and public health hazard that is clearly identified. Unfortunately, you know, the, the county, for whatever reason, had a straw underneath the road there. It's something I've never seen with the amount of drainage area that goes to it.
What size of the pipe gets.
Eight inch, oh, 18.
It's 18. Right now, it's eight.
Yeah.
You wanna go to 18?
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, the county, you're treating the water.
Correct.
Yeah, so everything on their lot, they're trying, they're, they're treating before it comes off. So they're able to reduce their own.
There's an existing 15 inch pipe that comes across Beekman.
Yeah.
That all of this development comes down and currently just sits until it fills up and finally gets into the eight inch because the eight inch is so high. So it's just gonna pond and it's gonna pond onto the, uh, road existing as well. So by that, we're gonna lower the 18 inch pipe to allow the water to not flood that area.
And what's happening on the 55 side? And you think on the?
I mean, on, uh, the Beekman road side, yeah. Coming down from Sylvan Estates in that valley.
Yeah, there will, there's.
Other stream it's located.
There's a decent amount of drainage area that comes down through the 72 acre parcel that's north of here.
Right.
It's across the street from Beekman Road. Um, you know, so, um.
Cause that's dumping on their property.
Yeah, yeah.
That's coming through, you know, and that's what's gonna make its way over to Charbel.
Right. So they're, they're controlling the discharge from the culvert that goes under Beekman Road, getting it over to the new culvert that crosses Greenhaven Road.
Right.
Yep.
That only addresses part of the problem.
Which is not their problem.
Right.
Which is the county's problem.
Yeah.
Seventy five acres.
Yeah, it's, it's either, you know, they're doing it here or the county's gonna do it at some point. Cause now they know it's a health safety issue. So.
Right.
You know, the, the county's very happy to have them do the pipe.
Yeah.
Let's put it that way.
So you're gonna reduce our taxes, right?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, so.
Can we look at the trailer?
What are we here for?
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So I guess my question to the board would be if you could advise of where we're at in the seeker process, um, looking at getting a seeker determination, um, once we resubmit and address all the outstanding comments.
Can you help me with that, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's where, that's the goal at this point. Uh, that's the next procedural step here.
Great.
Is to understand, you know, and, and make a determination on seeker. I'm, I'm still, you know, not happy with lot three, that, that water issue there. Um, you know, so I saw the latest, uh, iteration of what you might do with that infiltration basin. There's a couple of things that could happen. So if you end up buring on the other side, on the north side of it, then you're gonna trap water behind those lots. It's either that or you're gonna have to grade, positive grade up into those lots. It's like a mass grading type of effort.
Yeah. So in this area, you're gonna, we're gonna fill in a little bit. So it's gonna be positively pitched down into this basin. So you're gonna be having an elevation of like, uh, I forget what it is.
Some 54?
353. Well, 354 is the berm on the property line. You'll have a 353 here and it's like 356 at the building. So it's just gonna slope down and all of this is gonna come into it as well.
Yeah. And so the water level is getting up to like 35375 or so, which.
Yeah, which is all in here.
Yeah. And so that's why, you know, the easement has to.
Increase.
Increase to cover that entire size, entire area. Cause if you're gonna use it for stormwater, we can't have residents saying, oh, I don't like this little sump in the backyard. I'm gonna fill it. So that was important. Um, and just kinda understanding how, if there is a berm on that north side, if that's gonna trap drainage on those lots as well.
Yeah, there's no berm on that north side. It's just, it's gonna be, we're filling in the existing depression that's over here so that it is.
So you're gonna go positive slope from 353 or so up towards the house?
Yes. Yep.
All right. So then does that create fill where the septic system is or?
We push the septic system up. So there's not gonna be that much fill. There might be a little bit, but we could always do a fill pad there too, if we needed to.
And that'll be a permanent easement?
Yes.
So that it always has to stay there?
Yes.
Yeah. So I could, you know, continue to forge forward with that design and hopefully we can get that to a point where we're all happy about that. And, uh, you know, answer as much as you can with regard to any other of the comments that are outstanding here.
Yeah, and we'll resubmit back to DPW and DOH to address their comments. And we can't get their approval then until we get the neg deck. So we'll just work through that.
Yeah. So I, assuming that you can come in with something like that, um, you know, normally what we do is we get to a point where we're relatively close and then the board will authorize me to prepare parts two and three of the environmental assessment form. So, uh, if the board wants, I can prepare those after I see their next submittal based on what I say.
Okay.
And, uh, and then you could consider seeker at the next time when, when they're on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah?
Can we go over the tree removal plan?
I don't have that with me, but yes, we can, if you have any questions on it.
You wanna pull it up?
Uh, where are the tree removals?
Oh, they're not prepared, is what you said.
We have it.
No, it's.
It's just not on this board.
They didn't put it on board, yeah.
Yeah.
Lisa's pulling it up here. Do you guys have your screens on or no?
I can give you mine.
Uh, go up a couple of stages.
Do you want this?
I have it in my head.
You got it in my head, good.
We used to have a plan that showed like how you were cutting, how you were, you were cutting the openings, basically the area of disturbance.
Uh, that should be on the site plan sheet.
Yeah, there's still a LOD plant on there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, this seems like a lot more tree removals than, right? Yeah, so, yeah, this seems like a lot more tree removals than the last time.
The lot?
Yeah.
The parcel is all trees. All you do is drive by.
I know, but before they were only showing like a line that was just going around like the, the house and the septic. Now they, when you look at the actual tree removals.
Yeah, they're repitching that whole lot here. Yep, Lot Three. Is that right? Yeah, Lot Three is getting repitched. So you have positive from.
I'll go all this.
Yeah, driveways, the septic fields. These are the depressions, the catch basins, I guess. Yeah, so it is.
Seems like a lot.
It is confined to the driveways here. Maybe around, I mean, what, what is the purpose behind these, let's say? Do you see a reason?
I guess too, that's just for access to get around to the house.
Oh, right, during construction?
So is Lot Three the septic, is it right, is, because I'm looking at, you look.
So what you.
Is that the more up to date one?
This one I get, I was working on this morning. So I wanted to be able to present it to you because this is what we were thinking about to address Dan's comment. So I've taken the septic system that was originally in the depression and scooped it up.
By the house because she wants to get that part of it pitched.
The house moved up as well, yes.
But you're still, you're going to be filling in that whole area, so any trees going in there, gone.
Some of them can stay. Depending on how much fill we're going to bring in in certain areas, you can still fill up against some of them. At least that's the goal.
Say that again?
At least here.
If you're going to, we can still fill up against a tree and not remove it. Um, we just don't want to fill too much up against it or else it won't live. So we're going to limit as much as possible.
He knows trees.
We've backed it different.
You're going to, you're going to kill them.
It's like six inches-ish is where you can fill in.
It's a little more nuanced than that. I'm a landscape architect. It depends on the types of trees.
Right, yep.
Certain trees are a little less susceptible to compaction and, and fill damage, but.
I'd say we're going to limit, limit it as much as possible.
All right, so let's, I'm just going to make this comment. I need you to, would you please show on your drawings, uh, tree protection measures? I need, we'd like to see lists of all the tree removals so we could get an idea. Our board is required to sign this seeker and if you're, right now, as I see it, there is an impact to the trees. So I'm not sure how Dan's supposed to answer that. But we need to have a better idea to be able to make an assessment of that.
So when you say a tree list, do you want like each of the sizes and types that are being removed?
Yeah. That's what we've had done in the past. There's usually a list that shows, a listing of all the trees, their calipers, um, that are being removed.
Yeah, I mean, we have them all called out. I mean, they're all labeled on the plans. So we do have the size of trees. But we can break it out into a list.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, we're going to go to, did we have a public hearing on this yet?
Yes. Yes, everybody went through a public hearing.
Question for the attorney, there's, there's some pretty significant changes here since the public hearing. Does this?
There, if you deem those changes to be significant, then, um, seeker can be reopened.
Well, there hasn't been a seeker determination yet.
Closed in.
So. Public hearing can be reopened.
Right.
For additional comment.
As close as possible.
Trees walk.
Oh crap.
So Rob, I just ask a quick question. These can stay here, she said.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, they're not too close to the house and she'll keep those.
All right, if you could make an attempt to try to save more trees, that'd be helpful. And then show tree protection measures. So that our code enforcement can enforce that, you know, so I don't just ignore the drawing.
Great.
Okay. And, and like I said, the list. I don't know what we do about the hearing because there's been a lot of changes here.
Reopen it.
Yes, that's all you have to do.
When did we have the hearing? When it was under a different urgency, you were at that?
Yeah.
It was October of twenty-three, I believe.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Did you have any objection to opening up a new hearing to give our residents a chance to review the new plan?
I mean, we took over the project from Mike Lesby and I think it's very similar to his design. There have been some changes. So I understand your concern. I'm not sure it warrants opening a public hearing again. That's, that's up to the board.
What Mike was showing us for tree removal, when I think about what a resident thinks or notices as an impact is the amount of tree removals. That's, I think, one of the number one things that they, they pick up on like, oh my God, I didn't think they were going to do this much. So what Mike was showing us as tree removals on his, his little, just around the house, a little bit around the septic, is a lot different than what you're showing here, in my opinion. And I would recommend that we go to a public hearing just to give our, our, um, neighboring residents the opportunity to comment on a plan that they haven't seen yet.
One of the, one of the biggest concerns also was the water going to the neighbor's property from this, this project.
Right, and as a result, and I appreciate your attempts, your redesign to show the swell and the ponds and stuff. And so that's all new too. That's not what was in the original plan.
They would benefit, I mean, I think.
Your whole stormwater plan is different. Would you admit to that? It's not the same.
It's not the same as Mike Lesby's. It's, it's similar, but with, we have made improvements, I would say.
Very much so. He didn't have any baffles, none of the.
So you have good stuff to report to the public?
Yeah. Is, is it going to delay it?
I mean, that, I would say it would delay it, but.
We could take action after. It could be a one.
This is just my opinion.
Sure.
If the other board members don't feel.
Counsel, what do you think?
Well, listen, if you think that if there's a motion made and, and seconded, then, and you can consider it, take a vote. It's up to you.
I'll make a motion to, um, hold a public hearing.
You reopen, you'd be reopening.
I make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
And would that require, that would require notification, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Because it's already been closed.
Right.
Any other discussion?
I mean, I opened up my big mouth a lot, so.
No, you could.
Take a roll call vote.
I mean, the other, the other option is that you really look at the, the trees and reduce the number of tree removal as, as much as you possibly can. Do you think that's a better option?
I mean, we've taken a look at reducing it. We've tightened up where we're removing trees to just the limits of the grading. Um, and around the house, maybe. I don't know where else you could save those.
Can you align, can you align the swell on the top corner to be away from those ten, ten trees or so that you're removing?
Over here.
Yes, you know, align a little tighter to the corner.
So we can't do that because there is a, a plan to do an intersection improvement here. So we don't want to get it as close to the property line as possible or if they have to grade onto it. Like, because their current plan shows it grading right up to the property line, almost a little bit over. So we want to be able to give them space in case, heaven forbid, they fill in our swell. We don't want that to happen.
There may be a traffic light put there. Now, going back to the trees, now, are they substantial or are they like? Thirty or forty year growth trees?
So what, what Rob is proposing is that you, why don't you say it, Rob?
I, I, I just think if you shifted it like five feet, you could probably save those trees.
Shifted the swell?
Yeah. You'd still be probably ten feet away from your property line.
I mean, we're not that far from the property line to begin with. The swell starts right here, which is only like two or three feet away from the property line. So we're close to begin with.
Yeah, at that point, there's no tree removals. It's.
Up in here?
Yeah, as it's going around, I'm just saying.
More of an.
Do, yeah, do a little tighter rate.
You want to come around and see? Yeah.
Instead, this is, is this existing?
Or a more direct line. Turn around the other way and turn it.
What about a more direct line than those trees can stay?
You need to engineer that.
It just, it matters with your separation to your septic.
All I'm seeing is do this.
Yeah, that I can look at. I mean, I just want to keep it as far away from that property line as possible.
Yeah. And you're saving all of those, is what he's saying, because you will be.
Eighteen twenty-four, twenty-four, sixteen twenty-four.
I can take a look at that.
And then, how about these here? That whole run here.
Those can stay. Again, this is outdated based on that one. But yeah, we'll tighten it up to where, as close to the building as possible. And the driveway.
There's not much we can do about the driveway, septic fields or any of that, right? Or that pitching.
Could I also propose an alternative to opening the public hearing? I understand your concern regarding the tree removal. Could an alternative be to mitigate that by replanting some trees, some evergreen trees towards the front of the properties? Could we, could we mitigate that way?
I mean, maybe some, some combination of getting a little tighter with the tree removals.
Tighter and.
And then doing, that's what you're referring to is treatment mitigation.
Yep.
And if that's the way, you can explain it in a seeker, that yes, while we're removing this many trees, really you should be describing that in the seeker, how many trees you're removing. And then indicate what your mitigation measures.
Okay.
And now I, I would recommend, you know, you have a neighbor over here, so you want to do a lot of plantings where there's neighbors or joining neighbors.
We can go over that with the, with the applicant of what they're willing to propose for plantings, but.
So are you withdrawing that motion? For a public hearing? To reopen the public hearing in light of the mitigation that has been proposed.
I'd like to hear.
Was it seconded?
It was.
I guess my question is with respect to these trees, and Rob, you're expert on that. What's the historic value or year of these trees? Are they like a short growth or are they very mature trees?
Uh, I'm not sure. I can speak to that. I'm, I'm not a landscape architect, but, um, we had all the trees surveyed so we know what size they are and their location.
Typically, what size are they?
Oh.
Is there a legend?
They seem to range from eight, twelve inch. Twelve, there's.
According to your.
A lot of tens and twelves and then in the corners is more of the bigger ones. It's where there's probably some exposure.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Because the area was very wet.
Well, they're swamp.
Yeah, and I'm curious, you know.
Swamp maple, but they're a soft maple and the tree traditionally grows in.
So with that said, curious about something with, with the baffles and, and the treatment of the water, what will happen to those? I mean, it almost makes sense that the mitigation and the addition of, of the evergreens are going to.
Dry it up?
Well, not going to dry it.
But I'd rather you, yeah.
But if the, if the grade, if the grade is changed, normally during construction, we try to save the trees. And people want lawn area and everything. And so we get in there with our rake or our bulldozer and change the blade and change, we beat the daylights out of the root system and five years later, the trees are dead. That's the.
That's why we're protecting.
And that's the, that's the bottom line. And, uh, if you're going to put, okay, those trees are growing in a, in a wet area. So they are very surface rooted. Okay, probably potentially the root system, no, no greater depth than eighteen inches at the, at the most. And you're going to, you, you're going to cover those, that root system up with dirt. And you're going to change the, um, the aerobics, is that the word? Of the, of the, of the soil and.
You're removing the core space.
And you're, that's, you're going to help to, uh, it's, it's going to have a negative effect on the trees.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm satisfied with what we're talking about. You're going to tighten up the tree removals, be more deliberate about trying to protect trees where you can. You're going to propose a tree mitigation plan and then you're also going to show us tree fencing to protect the existing trees that are remaining so that the contractor doesn't then roughshod. The question is, am I going to do a? That's fine, yeah, all right.
Well, and also if you're going to do that, you need to set a diameter or how far away from the trunk of the tree are you going to put the protection fencing?
We do have a detail on our lands for tree protection. I forget what the diameter is, but we do include a detail and especially on our emergency plan, we do show that.
Yeah, it, it's usually like the canopy limit, right? But, and that's great, but that's going to be hard to achieve here. And you're going to have, likely going to have disturbance that's near to a tree. I'd rather give the tree a shot than remove it. So you're going to be conservative on, so I think if you could just show that fencing at the edge of your disturbance, you know, to the extent that we can allow some, you know, you can't inhibit, like prohibit work.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, um, you know, it's, it's entirely, it's tough to meet, I, I would like you to show that, that detail. But the actual line is what's the easiest thing for our, our, our code enforcement officer to follow when they're inspecting.
Usually we'll show just a circle around each tree and a certain distance away from it so we can show that off.
Either way, I want you to address tree protection, so. All right, I guess if it's relatively close, there's, and we're going to make it resemble more closer to what was originally planned as far as tree removals, then maybe we don't need to go to a public hearing. So I will, is it retract or?
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Withdraw the motion.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Green Hill Farms Holdings, please. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me, Ernie Martin, representing the owner applicant, Green Hill Farms Holdings LLC. At our last meeting, we had a significant conversation regarding the location of the wetlands and the location of trees. Uh, since that meeting, we've hired a wetland biologist who's going out and delineated the wetland. We've met with the DEC at the site to, um, confirm those locations. Uh, we have sent a map to the DEC and not included in your, or in our submittal, but I recently received an email stating that the, that they are in agreement with the wetland and they, um, are willing to sign the wetland stamp. Uh, in addition, uh, we've located trees on the site. And if remember, we spoke quite extensively about a conifer grove that, that, uh, is located on lots three and four. Uh, we have positioned the houses and the driveways to not, um, touch that particular, uh, conifer, conifer grove. There are a few trees located to the east of that conifer grove. There are some old apples, apple trees, I think, that probably have. There are some old apples, apple trees, I think, that probably have seen better days. There's probably going to be a few of those that are going to be removed. I believe in Dan's comments, he should be indicated that, or asked that we indicate those trees to be located, the trees that be removed be located and denoted. It's probably going to be maybe two trees, maybe three at the most. As you probably know, a good part of the site is open fields. It's actively hayed yearly, so other than that, there's really no trees that are going to be disturbed. We also, in hiring the wetland biologist, we also performed a habitat assessment report. That is part of your, the submittal that we made to the town. In the past, we've also done soil testing with the presence of the health department. We've done our percolation tests and we are currently designing the septic systems, which will enable us to also fine tune the positioning of the houses, the driveways and all the grading that would go with that. We've made a preliminary estimate of disturbance for the development of the site, keeping in mind that two of the lots are existing houses, the main house, which sits on about twelve and a half acres, and the house in front, which is, sits on about 1.2 acres. And we're estimating at this point, it's about one acre of disturbance. As we fine tune the plans, that may be plus or minus a little bit. So at this point, I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Dan, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so, you know, we prepared a letter the other day. A lot of the information that we asked for has been provided.
You're recommending sketch at this point? And declare our intent?
Yes. And I think the one thing, I was just going to try to check really quick, it's the parcel itself, we might want to add Ag and Markets to the list of, on this one as well.
Okay.
Of agencies. So I had mentioned about sending it to the DEC, Health Department, Department of Planning and Development, Conservation Advisory Council, the Highway Department, the Town Highway Department and the Fire Advisory Board, but I want to add New York State Ag and Markets on there as well. So that would be, want to add to that.
Where's the Ag district?
The parcel itself is.
It's in the Ag district.
So we're doing four lots along Beach Road, really, all right?
I'm sorry? He said, are you doing four lots along Beach Road?
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to.
I mean, I guess technically five, if you, you know, it's the one that comes down behind the very first one on the far right side of the map. But the ones that are closer to Beach are the four in a row. And those are, those lots, right? Four lots right here.
Yeah.
And then over here, we have a lot.
It looks like there's a stream on the property. Do they have to do a special use permit for that?
There is, and we've asked them to show the fifty-foot town water course buffer on that as well.
We've confirmed with the DEC, it is classified as a CT stream. We're not planning any improvements in that area. And as Don, Dan mentioned, we'll have a fifty-foot buffer on either side of it.
Yeah, and you might just have to move that well that's on Lot Two, because that might be in the fifty-foot buffer. So that, right now, that would be the only potential disturbance within the buffer. So they're avoiding the buffer.
What's the disturbance?
A proposed well on Lot Two.
Proposed well.
In the disturbance area that they're going to move.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think there's enough room on that lot to move that around.
Yeah.
Separation wise to the septics and all that.
And why, you're just staying out of the fifty-foot buffer?
That's correct.
And the wetlands, you're staying out of the fifty-foot buffer?
Yep.
No steep slopes.
Hundred-foot buffer, yes.
Hundred, I'm sorry, hundred-foot buffer. And there's not a lot of trees on the lot because it's an old farm field.
That's correct. It's still actively hayed.
So we're building, we're building five houses.
Have you done the test pits yet?
Yes. Yes, we've done our test pits, we've done our percolation tests. It was witnessed by the, by Dan Keeler from the Health Department. We are currently designing the septic systems. All the lots, with the exception of Lot Two, are all going to be in the ground systems. We actually had very good soils. We had gravelly soils, which was in line with the soil data.
I find that the soil survey is a pretty good indicator of what's in there.
Yeah, it is.
The wells, what kind of well testing have you done?
Well, we haven't done any well testing. And I spoke to the Health Department about that. What he, what he would like us to do, submit our plan with our septics, and then we'll come up with a protocol, what we're going to do. As you know, we have two existing wells for the two houses. We may use those two wells and use those as test wells, or we may use one of them and drill a new well. That's to be determined.
These aquifers are getting to be big issues.
It's there, you just got to go down deep enough.
Yeah, but you know, it's all swamp back through there.
There's a lot back there, yeah.
So assuming that we're moving through the soil.
They're looking for sketch.
You go deep enough.
Oh, yes. It's gravel, but. It's gravel.
Sketch and declare lead agency. So if you'd like to.
Gravel.
Go ahead.
But if you go deep enough and it's, and this swamp adjacent to it.
Right.
Or what, maybe you want to go west on the, actually both sides.
No, you don't.
I also do the boost. And then I make the boost motion.
Well, you're most experienced.
I'm ready to move forward on this. I don't have any other issues. It's a very deliberate plan that's limiting its impact to natural features, so I think.
So what do you want, do you grant sketch?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to grant sketch approval.
Second.
Second, Figurito, all in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to declare lead agency, the intent to declare lead agency to include Ag and Markets, I mean, yeah.
It's you, buddy.
I'll second your.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What a smart.
unanimous. There we go.
He doesn't have that.
Very good. Thank you. As far as.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you can, if you can work on getting that ag data statement updated a little bit and then get that to Alitha as soon as possible, because that, we like to send the ag data statement out with that lead agency circulation letter as well.
Okay.
And then, just for your own purposes, for you to move forward fastest and start chopping on the 130-20, the requirements in 130-20. So show as much as you can on the map as, to meet that, and that'll help you in the, move along in the process.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Plum Court.
Yay. I can't place this one.
Right here, yeah. Pete, you missed this one.
We thank you for your patience.
This is Plum Court, yeah. There was an issue where, maybe Dan was there, a quick way to explain it to Pete, who wasn't here for the first, or should we have?
Adam can probably take care of it.
Okay.
You know.
Adam, Pete wasn't here when you were here the first time. If you could just.
Do the abbreviated version?
The abbreviated version of what happened there, so he understands.
Sure. Adam Weckstein from Hockerman, Tortorella and Weckstein, good evening.
Good evening.
We are here to fix a surveyor's error that goes well back. The Plum Court subdivision was originally approved in 2002 after seventeen lots had been sold. It was discovered that the original subdivider had made errors.
Of course, that was corrected.
It was. Sixteen of the seventeen lot owners who had purchased lots agreed and joined in that subdivision application. One, the owner of Lot Nine, which is what we hear about, did not. So what happened was Lot Nine is shown near, and when the board amended the plot in 2010, which was filed in 2011, it did several things. It put on each side parcel A, which is .022 acres, and parcel B, which is .035, .022, .035, for the possibility that in the future, these would be incorporated into Lot Nine. And at the same time, a strip of Lot Nine that is now in the right-of-way of what should be the right-of-way of Plum Court could be conveyed in exchange for those two to my client, Lennar. In other words, Lennar owns A and B, and the owner of Lot Nine, Mr. Sweeney, owns what we call parcel YY, which is actually just part of his lot, it's not divided off. So our proposal right now is to do a lot line alteration. We're not touching anything physically, and it really has three components. Number one is that these two strips would be incorporated into Lot Nine. This portion, which is currently in the right-of-way, would be made a separate lot, and it's about .05 acres, and conveyed to Lennar in exchange for that. And Lennar will offer for dedication that portion of the lot YY to the town for inclusion in Plum Court. The rest of the Plum Court drive has been dedicated, including the right-of-way.
And that, that connects with what's already been dedicated?
Correct.
Right.
It would make, it would make this edge of the right-of-way even. It doesn't affect the pavement, one way or the other, but it then makes it even right-of-way all the way around. Right now, there's a gore into it. Doesn't make much sense. So that's number one. And two, depending how you count. The other part of this, which is also, I want to apologize for this board, and our surveyor called me early afternoon and said he has horrible flu-like symptoms, I'll be really going to need him. And I said, no. So he was bringing the boards and I did this quickly, which is, I wouldn't be a lawyer. That's why it looks like that. The other part of this is, there is an easement in favor of Dutchess County DCWWA, Dutchess County Water and Waste Board authority, and they should have shown it to me on the other side. But because of the surveying error, the easement is from here to here. So it's on Lot Nine, parcel B, and will then onto Lot E. The problem is, the part that's on parcel nine is partially under the house that's there, which creates all kinds of problems. So we have gone to DCWWA. You have a letter that you should have received within the last few days. I think it's dated November 15th. They're conceptually on board with this, but what is intended is that this crosshatched area, which goes under the house, will be eliminated from the easement. So the easement will be reconfigured and it will, as the note says, be released and the new easement, which will be shaped so that it does include this area, will be put in place. The easement will still be very close to the house, but it won't be under it. The force main and the water line that run through the easement will remain in their current provision, position. There'll be no change to that.
But that's still on their property?
It is, it is, yes. Well, it's, it's on what will be their property.
I'm sorry?
I think one portion of it is actually on their property and one portion of it, you know what, those lines are on parcel B.
Okay, so that's not.
But they're not being moved. It's just that that is now being incorporated into their lot, and they're still subject to that.
But the easement under the house is in use, right?
Well, the easement under the house is just there to surround the sewer and water force main, but it's not in use. They can't get to it because it's actually under the house and it's, it's wide enough so that.
Well, excuse me, I, there's no physical.
No infrastructure in there.
Okay.
Correct. It's there to provide a buffer on each side, and DCWWA has made a determination, and I shouldn't speak for them, but essentially they can work with, in the event there's a problem with the water main or the force main, there's enough room for them to work with it. I mean, they really don't have much choice. They said there wasn't, that there were a problem and they needed to get on the house side even today. They'd have, I don't know how you'd work under the, under the house. So this, this makes sense. And the only other aspect of this is that the way the subdivision approval is written on all of the lots in proximity to this lot and on most of the lots in the subdivision, there is a ten-foot, not described by beats and bounds, easement from the front lot line of each lot, so that DCWWA or the town can come in and make repairs if necessary. So as we're moving back the front lot line, by necessity, the actual ten-foot easement gets moved back as well.
Now, going back to the easement that's under the house.
Yes.
Is that going to be eliminated? Or they have to live with an easement under their house?
No, no.
You can't get to it?
The, I'm sorry, I'm interrupt. The whole point of this is that if you see where the crosshatch area is.
Yes, yes.
That's the entire area under the house.
Right.
The easement will be, once it's reconfigured.
Right.
The side that is to the southeast, which is actually on Lot Eight a little bit, will be untouched, but the portion of the easement under the house will be gone and the new easement will be extremely close to the house, but will not be under it. And there'll be some, a few feet between the house and the closest utility line. This is what it is today.
And it's there now?
Correct. There's no change. There are no physical changes associated with this.
All the parties that are involved in all of this are in agreement?
Yes. Mr. Sweeney's attorney wrote a letter to your board indicating he supported Mr. Sweeney, and I think method Sweeney are here. If you want to ask them, Lennar owns lots, parcels A, parcels B, and Lot A. Mr. Sweeney owns Lot Nine. So that is my long-winded way of saying yes.
Michael Sweeney, 29 Plum Court, Lot Nine, as it's referred to. I'm in agreeance with the amendment as it's being proposed here, with the adjustments of the pie-shaped sides and the conveyance in the front, and as long as the easement is removed from the home.
That's important.
Okay. And as far as any, everything is existing, so it would be a pre-existing condition. And the utilities are present in the spot, there's no changing that.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
So if everybody's in agreement, what?
We have a motion to.
We should have. We should approve whatever it is.
Okay, so I have the approval for the...
We did prepare a resolution for your consideration.
Would you like me to read it?
It's relatively long. I mean, I can just basically summarize a few things on here.
Thank you.
In essence, we've kind of looked at this as a continuation of the previous application that was before this board that was approved. That plan, to see, you know, kind of to your point, had every single lot owner sign. So everybody was in agreement with it at that point of cleaning up the mess. The only one that didn't clean up the mess was the Sweenes, and they were there at the time, and they're still there, and now they're looking to join in and clean it up, and this finishes it up. It's a relocation of invisible lines with no physical disturbance. It's probably the easiest thing that you can have before you.
These are de minimis changes.
Right. Did you lose any land, Mr. Sweeney? Did you lose any land?
No, it was a swap. They left the two strips, the parcels A and B.
Oh, I see. Gotcha.
So it would remain the same.
Thank you.
So when they did the original one, they actually left those purposefully in case they could ever cut a deal with the Sweenes to do the swap. And it was pretty much even.
And just to be clear, the reason of not performance in the beginning was because easement was running through the home.
Oh.
Because of what?
I like that.
The easement was running through the home.
Which your title company didn't pick up?
Nobody picked it up because of this.
Yeah. It's an unfortunate situation, and this helped clean it up.
Sorry you went through that.
Sticked out the homes and the, you know, it was a, it was a mess, and we were thrilled a bit.
So this is beneficial because it cleans up their situation, their title?
I can't speak for them, but I think it does, and Lennar wants this to all make sense at this point.
Sure.
So what do we need to do?
So this was a resolution that we had drafted up. Basically, the concept would be that the board would waive the requirement of a public hearing, such a de minimis action, as Craig had mentioned. In essence, this would also be, in terms of today's standards, lot line realignment are type-two actions. Back when this was originally done, it was not a type-two action necessarily. Now it's specifically listed as a type-two action for simple lot line realignment. So there's really no seeker to deal with because it's a type-two action. So that's in the resolution that you would deem it a type-two action, the waiving of the public hearing, and then the granting of preliminary subdivision plat, and then granting of conditional final subdivision plat, lot line realignment approval. And we delineated seven conditions. I shared these with the attorney and didn't have any objections to any of those. And it's really just a matter of cleaning up the legal and then filing the paperwork with clerks, and everybody can move on.
All right, so we've got to do everything in stages, right?
No. I make a motion as drafted.
As drafted, I would second that happily.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Finished.
Have a good evening. How many years?
We've been there...
Congratulations, I guess, right?
This is the longest simple project I've ever had.
Yeah. Not simple, I wouldn't say.
It's definitely not simple.
Well, no, the other seven, sixteen were not simple.
Right.
This part, thank you.
I'm glad Harry will clear it up.
Lennar was going. I remember.
Okay.
Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
We're sorry you had to go through that for that long.
You got an education tonight.
Okay, so...
Holy shucks.
Repeat offender.
I wonder on how many we have.
There we go.
All the look on your face when you heard that.
Didn't you think? I know exactly, I don't know what it is. It's not on our agenda.
It's on the bag.
It's on there.
Well, I missed it.
I'll try to make it quick.
All right.
As quick as I can make this long endeavor.
Who's the apples? Oh, Jesus, we've got a lot of them.
All right, Brian, if you could tell us what you're here to do?
Good afternoon again. Brian Watts from Bay Stokosa here. I'm here with the Stone Ridge Estates, a long project that we're hopeful is coming to an end here, with the final piece being the trail. It was originally approved, has been installed. The easements for that original trail were based on the center line, fifteen-foot offset on either side. They as-built it, and the blue, you might not be able to see it, the blue line is the actual as-installed location of the trail, which differs from the filed map version. So we are seeking to correct, grant the correct easement that would allow that trail to be accessed as originally intended and approved. So over here, and the, there's two existing common driveway easements that aren't used. The houses are all constructed, the driveways are constructed individually access, so these easements are no longer native, so they would be extinguished.
Right.
And across the street, this trail is also installed and completed. This is as-surveyed, so we're going to, we have to provide that easement there. So that's essentially the scope here for...
And there's a rope going on the steep part, right?
Pardon?
I saw that.
Oh, the...
It's already in there, yeah.
It's not there yet.
Oh, no, okay.
This, I believe it's in this area.
It's going to be, yeah.
But, so that's it here. We just have to amend these easements to accommodate what's actually been built out there. So we're hopeful that, you know, this is mostly just technical meets bounds and easement language, so legalities that we would be able to work with the consultants offline and get that complete without having to continually use the board's time.
Right. So the purpose tonight is for us to just accept these as-is and then...
Work with the consultants to...
Work with the consultants.
Make it airtight, make sure there's not a seventeen-year or anything.
Right. Does the board have any discussion about these items?
No. Can you bring it up on the screen, Alitha?
Yep.
Because on our drawing, it doesn't show the as-built division. It just shows the proposed...
The blue? Is the blue on that one?
It's not here. I don't see any blue color.
There was some blue.
Is it black and white?
No, I can't... Okay, yeah, no.
Oh, okay. It's missing it. Here, he's going to show you the...
This is for where it is.
Thank you.
Apologize.
No problem.
This one has the blue.
Yeah, there you go.
That's the as-built, and then the gray is the approved easement.
All right, so first question is, it's not approaching the road, Bentonmore Road, at the right place?
That's something I spoke to, if you don't mind. I spoke to Brian Stokosa from this Brian's office, and the surveyor probably just missed this portion. It's a little bit overgrown, so...
So it's there?
It is there, yeah. We notice how straight that is. He took the last shot, and he just kind of extended it to the right of the thing. Yeah, I mean, that would be a technical thing. I would ask them to update.
That's where the swale is.
Bring it up to the crosswalk.
I don't think there's a swale there. It's pretty flat on that end.
There's a thing for stormwater runoff.
Yeah, there's a pond here.
Oh, on the left, yeah.
Yep.
So you're not showing the easement on here?
He's showing the existing.
You're saying it's fifteen foot off the center line of that?
That was the original mechanism for the filed map. It's eight foot, yeah, I think, right? I thought it was fifteen foot off, regardless, it was based on the center line of the shown trail on the original filed map, which did not match existing location. So we can either do blanket easement or a specifically, specific provided easement, whichever is the town professional's discretion on which they think best account is the need of the town. Either one is fine. The applicant's just looking to...
What's a blanket easement? It's just a description?
Just here, it's over whole land. So it would be over the homeowners. It would just give you a blanket easement to access that land for the specific purpose. I'm describing that correctly.
This whole parcel?
The homeowner's parcel, yes. Yeah, and, you know, the only issue with that would be that, you know, in theory, somebody could move the trail closer to, you know, properties that are developed already.
Which would make somebody happy there.
I'm sorry?
Would make one lady happy there.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Or more association property. So if you, I think it would be better to be more deliberate, have the easement relate more to the path itself.
Oh, that's fine.
And so that it would be off the center line. So are you going to provide an easement map in addition to a meets and bounds description?
We'll modify this one with the meets and bounds as needed, with the actual lines, actual meets and bounds. So we're hopeful that, because it's extremely technical, invisible lines, we could keep it offline. Everyone could go home happy for the holidays that don't be celebrated, at least for 2024.
Yeah, so in essence, just to update the board, this was, there was a decision made by this board in 2021, and the decision was to eliminate the two shared driveway easements. It was to relocate some of the street trees, which they've actually already done. It also had some minor drainage stuff associated with it, and it actually denied the elimination of the trail.
Right, right.
So this, this particular application at this point would be really cleaning up a lot of things. It would be a way to file a map that shows that those shared driveway easements are dissolved. It'll show a map now that will be filed that will show the easement for where the trail actually is. And there was some discretion incorporated into the original subdivision plan to allow for that trail to possibly change direction as needed based on large trees or rocks or whatever else that they might encounter.
Oh, and that's what happened?
And that might be part of it, you know. I think it's really hard to construct a trail within an eight-foot-wide easement when you're going through the woods, and the topography wasn't exactly as the design plan showed in a few areas. And then there were some trees that, you know, would have been a shame to take down a 24- or 30-inch tree to put the trail when you could just move the trail five feet this way, but the five feet goes out of the easement now because it's such a small easement. So now that there's an actual trail that's built, you know, I don't know if it's getting any use to maintain it right now, but it'll be better to have that memorialized on the map that will be filed.
I agree with everything you're saying.
You know what it is? It is a connector trail to a larger trail plan that is, that is part of the Recreation Department's comprehensive trail.
Plus, it's part of the perspectives. You can't now eliminate the conditions which all these properties have been sold. They've been sold knowing that this trail is there.
Exactly, right.
But I would like to know, what is the easement width? What was the easement width to begin with? What's the width of the easement here?
It was, I'll look it up. Technically, it's before my time. I'm racking my brain.
You think it's only eight feet?
I think it's eight, yeah.
Can't we fix that?
It was like a four-foot-wide trail and an eight-foot-wide easement.
It's the back end of the property, right?
I mean, at least make it a fifteen-foot easement.
I, you know, I...
Or sixteen foot.
And I said the same thing to Brian, the other Brian. I'll call him Stokosa from now on.
Watch Stokosa, just pick one, it does...
And I said the same thing to him about the trail that goes through Open Space F. So Open Space F, when it went through the approval process, for whatever reason, it may not have been as critical. They showed a concept trail location, but they never put a meets and bounds easement on it. It was always the intention, once it was designed, to have a meets and bounds added to it so that it would stay in that area generally. But this is that opportunity to kind of also memorialize that with this filing of this map.
I agree with everything you're saying. Let's do that. But can we make the easement wider?
Oh, so to my point, so the Open Space F trail, it was going around a lot, and I said, geez, this is going to be, you know, 800 segments of meets and bounds with just this little bit, and then it changes direction and it goes here. And so I said to Brian Stokosa, I said, maybe we could put, either define a center line and say offset seven and a half feet each side to make it 15 feet total, or just give, you know, the meets and bounds for the 15 feet or the perimeter. So he sounded like, I think he was in favor of that as well. It'll make paperwork a little bit easier, and it'll also give a little bit of flexibility as, you know, the trail might migrate a tiny little bit here and there over time.
It might be a hydrologic situation that takes out the trail and then makes it hard to keep it within easement. Someone decides to...
I don't think we have any ancient walls or streams. I don't think we have any shallow trees or anything, but...
I'm saying people change their pipes on their houses.
Oh, yes, they do.
Pause the rail in a gully, and that turns into something bigger, and then, or some grades. I don't know what happened. There's, it's, I'm never surprised anymore.
A tree can fall somewhere else and it changes stuff.
What about making it 20 foot? Can we just do like an easy 20-foot easement?
That's substantive change or anything.
Boy, somebody's not going to be happy with that, this.
I don't know what the HOA doc said.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's true.
Ask Linda Schuber, she'll tell you.
HOA doc was before my time as well, and I don't have much insight on that.
Just don't say that three times.
She's in Arizona.
And I think we're definitely motivated to try to expedite this and make it as soon as possible.
I think either you can make it a bigger easement, or you can't. It's not a question of whether, yeah, you can, but don't go too much. Like, it's either you can or you can't.
Right, like, what's the difference of 15 or 20 at that point?
If you can, the optimal is 20. The minimum is 20. Usually, in the counting, we do 30-foot easements for trails.
And that's good.
The minimum is 20. If trees start running, and then you have to redo the trail in the future, you need room to adjust.
Or people get bigger.
Yeah.
So what are we doing, guys? We proposing the 20? We're sticking with the 14? You said seven from somewhere?
I would propose we do an easement that relates to the existing trailway alignment that's 20-foot wide, 10-foot off the center line of the existing path, so from eight feet to 12 feet.
Well, I thought he said seven off the center line in either direction.
Ten, I said 10.
No, the original.
The original was.
The original was eight.
But then you proposed to Brian Stokosa, seven off center on each side.
I suggested that there might be a way to make it a lot cleaner in terms of not having tremendous amount of segments that, you know...
So what Rob is saying is that if there is a hydrological change whatsoever, a gully created naturally or human, 20 might give more of an opportunity for the trail to move within that space.
So we'll look into it.
I think parts of it.
If you want to be able to close it tonight, I'm willing to say 20-foot maximum.
Where possible.
If, if the rules require less than 20...
We stay in compliance?
To the minimum, those rules or whatever.
Right, for the HOA rules and things. We don't need to make a vote, do we?
So we, you haven't seen this, we did prepare, Craig and I spoke about a resolution, basically reaffirming what the planning board had decided at its August 19, 2021 meeting. We could add this blurb about making the trail easement larger if it's legally, if it's legal to do so.
Okay.
And basically, since it was, there's really no substantive change from what was previously decided by this board, August 19, 2021. We now know what I had suspected for a long time, that parts of the trail weren't... We now know what I had suspected for a long time, that parts of the trail weren't in the easement. And so now we're memorializing it and we're cleaning it up. This is two projects in a row of cleaning up, so...
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, it's really a de minimis application at this point for that, and we'll do our work together on the outskirts.
Okay. So you want a motion to approve the resolution with the amendment?
Yes.
As specified.
You want to make that, Rob?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Good day, Brian.
It's two for two. I'm happy.
You're happy. Go on.
We got a little rain today, so I'm happy.
Yeah, you're even.
What couldn't happen is they abandoned the trail.
Tonight, 1:00 AM, heavy snow except. 1:00 AM, heavy snow except. We're supposed to get a inch of snow in one hour.
More flexibility to go around the tree rather than cut it.
I'd like to be sleeping then, too.
Still stay in the easement.
Safety, best relax.
Continue the long fishgill group around that mine lake.
Again, thank the board for all the consideration.
Then you could get from there to Recreation Road.
Well, you had a long wait.
Make a motion that we get some more comfortable chairs for everybody.
Yeah.
How about we finish before midnight?
We will.
We need to put a limit.
Oh, my gosh, nope.
On how many people, how many...
Yeah, can we save that? You're extending the meeting, but you're... Well, it is.
Come on, guys.
We can. Gray Palo East?
Good evening.
Good evening.
John from DC Engineering here for an update for you guys for Gray Palo East subdivision. When we last left off, Dan's office had given us a comment letter from Stormwater Improvement Plan.
We skipped Treetop. I'm sorry. Yeah, what?
To that end...
I apologize.
It's okay.
We have one before you.
You know what? Just make a motion to go out of turn.
Okay, motion out of turn. You're right. Thank you. Suspend rules. Motion out of turn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. It's all good. We're almost done.
Yes.
So we got a comment letter from Dan's office regarding this Stormwater Improvement Plan. To that end, I have a copy for Dan tonight.
Okay.
This hopefully is the last one.
Great.
After that, we're still waiting for the surveyor to give us the formal easements around the stormwater improvements.
Okay.
I checked in with him, and he was going to be out of his office all, I think, the 27th to 20th. It was right around the end of the month. So he knows, he's got everything. We gave it to him a couple of months ago. I'm hoping that we get the easements, we can pull those to Dan's office and finally put this into bed.
Very good. All right. So what are you looking for?
From your lips to God's ears.
That's right.
I can't take much more of this.
She waited all this time for that.
Copy of a report.
Okay.
Response letter, plans, in the line, everything ready.
Okay.
And Eric can be called more on, or we can just take more care of it. Do more working over the phone. It's a deep bed.
Are we extending it?
And you have any legal docs for Craig to review then for those or...
That's the easement part that we're waiting on the surveyor for the meets and bounds. And...
Do you have the actual, like, legal part, though?
Yeah, schedule A. I don't have any of that yet.
I mean, he could still look at the legal part without...
Okay.
The meets and bounds descriptions, and I can look at the meets and bounds after or something.
I'll talk to the client.
Just to kind of...
She's dealing directly with the attorney for all the...
Try to push this. It's like super delinquent.
Yeah.
We should have never granted approval at this point if it was going to take this long.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Is the stormwater plan individual, stormwater practices for each lot?
Yeah. It was actually three separate stormwater plans. One was this kind of standalone because it was an existing house there. It was real simple ones. Two and three were quite a bit more golf.
And they fit to where the practices? Bio retention?
Bio retention on one, rain garden on the other, infiltration for all three, for the roof disconnects. So and then stormwater diversion to get it run off off the back hill out into the woods.
And so you're going to check them all, Dan, and see if they meet our approval for stormwater practices?
Yes.
As our authority is in MS4 to make sure.
It is our authority, yes.
So we need... So you're just submitting that tonight? Tonight's...
Well, it's gone through with Eric once before. This is revision based on a his comments.
I see.
So hopefully, we've given them everything he's asked for.
Okay.
And at that point, hopefully, it's good to go. We're ready to get started in MS4.
Thank you.
Anything for us to do, Dan?
So there's... It would be an extension. I'm just pulling up some dates. So the last extension, let's see, went through... It's pulling up. This last extension went through November 11 of 2024.
How long are you proposing an extension?
And actually, what we did was we... I'm sorry. Let me just make sure I'm saying that right.
So it's expired, this whole project?
No, no. So actually, we granted the 130-day at the last meeting, so that went through December 11, 2024. So right now, it's good through December 11, 2024. And if I add 30 or 90 days to that...
March. Make it for that meeting? For that move?
Yeah, that puts you at March 11, so let's see what the March meeting would be. You have the 20th on that? All right, so then... Is that going to be 99 days?
You want us to approve those?
Let's see. So 99 days goes through March 20, 2025.
Can you go 99 days? Can you?
Yes.
Oh, you can.
We can't change...
I'd like to make a motion to extend the application to the March 20 meeting, 2025?
I'll happily second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be back with information and the surveyor and...
Hey, John. Of course, in 2025, we're going to change the meeting night from Thursdays to Tuesdays, so that's going to screw up...
No, we're not. We're going to approve them as is.
No, we're just going to work from Thursday into Friday.
Yeah. So we're getting there.
Hang in there, guys. We got two more.
One more hour and we're into Friday.
Thank you. So we've got next, Treetop Adventures. There's a resolution here in front of me where basically he's closing it. And what it says is that if he wants to reopen it, he'll reapproach the board for...
I will make a motion to accept that resolution as written.
Very good. And we'll be returning the bond accordingly. Can I have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And just for the record, technically, it's a referral back to the town board. The town board has to release...
The money?
The money.
Can you just attach the old resolution of approval and the letter from Mr. Barton to this resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, it's...
It's in here if you need it.
Because it tells the story for the town board.
Right. And the second and last item tonight, Barton Orchards, is an extension. How long would Peter like us to extend this? Did he actually put a specific amount of time on there or...
I'm sorry.
He didn't... It says, "I respectfully request an extension of site plan to allow time for DC HD stamp of approval on the site plan to town signature." So it's ambiguous.
So we're still waiting for Health Department approval, that's why?
Yeah. Yes.
Do you know if he's actively pursuing it? Is there any reason why we should believe that he's languishing on this? You don't have to know.
No, I don't know the answer to that. I apologize, but...
So why don't we give him another 90?
Let's take a look at the dates. Maybe we do another thing where we go to a meeting date.
Yes.
So let's see, we're kind of a little retro here. He did ask before the date year, but November 8 was when the last extension went through.
Okay.
So let's see where that puts us.
So maybe I shouldn't request the court hearing?
No.
I think he's away in February, and I don't know when he'll do public hearings.
No.
So that puts us towards the February meeting. So if we head towards the February 20 meeting, that's 104 days, I believe. Let me just check the math there. Yeah. 104-day extension would bring you through February 20 of 2025.
Good.
All right, also move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the meeting.
Oh, no.
Want to stay? All right.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.